All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask Stacy for a roll call.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Here.
Councilmember Sander is absent. Councilmember Budge?
Here.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Here.
Mayor Gatewood?
Here. So at this point, I'm gonna call on our city manager for a city council agenda update. Cyrus?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to let you know that item 12.3, Commercial Real Estate Signs, scheduled for tonight, has been continued to a work session that's planned for August 24th here at the City Hall. So just wanted to make that update to you. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Excellent. Okay, I'm gonna ask Stacy for the meeting recording and playback schedule.
Um, should, should, um, should we make that motion when that item comes up? Or should we make that now or what?
Adam?
Can I make the suggestion that we take roll call and actually call a meeting to order before we do anything like that?
Let's do that. Go ahead, Stacy. Oh, she already called it.
She did call roll.
We already called it to order.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You're right. Yeah, then Linda's right. Go ahead.
So we'll do that, um, we're gonna do that, um, at the meeting agenda item. So we'll do the, uh...
Okay.
All right, so let me go ahead and call Stacy, uh, ask Stacy to do our meeting video recording and playback schedule.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, August 5th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, August 8th at 1:00 p.m. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of the meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
All right. So I'm gonna call on Cyrus to do the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. If everyone could stay standing, and we're gonna have our invocation today given to us by Maurice Anderson with the praise of Nature Ministries.
So I don't see Maurice in our Zoom room, and I don't see that he is present in the room.
I'll go ahead and do the invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for all this time for us to give us guidance and strength. Please watch over us as we take these next steps. Please help us know your will and speak through our citizens and do the right thing by you. In your name, we pray. Right. Okay.
Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you. All right, presentations. Introduction of new employees. So I'm gonna call on Amanda Norton for Economic Development. You finally got a new person. Thank goodness. Cyrus?
I feel much the same way. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thanks so much for having me this evening. I'm Amanda Norton, the Economic Development Manager here for the city of Rancho Cordova. And I am very proud to introduce Ashley Kobe. She is the newest member to our team. And I'll let her talk a few minutes about herself on this one.
Hello. I'm very excited to be part of the economic development team. I don't have experience in economic development, but I've been in the community for years. I worked at the Sac State Aquatic Center, worked with community members on regattas and all of those things. So I'm very excited to be here. I came originally from the city of Sacramento, and this is a way more fun team.
Yeah, we don't hold that against you.
I had a song prepared, but you know, my music kinda got left out, so... But I'm very excited to be here.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna call on Edgar Medina for our new employee.
Mayor Gatewood, councilmembers, Edgar Medina, Principal Engineer in the Public Works Department. I'm very happy to introduce Jesse Yabis. He's one of our new assistant engineers that's gonna help deliver CIP projects. With that, I'll pass it on to Jesse.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable councilmembers. As Edgar said, I'm Jesse Yabis. I'm new to the CIP Public Works team. I'm very excited to be here. I most recently worked for the city of San Jose doing a similar role, developing capital improvement projects for the city. I'm very excited to have made the transition here to the city of Rancho Cordova. I'm very fortunate for the opportunity to continue my career as a professional engineer or work my way towards a professional engineer. Most recently with me, my wife and I actually just got married. We had been together for over seven years. Have you met in San Jose? And our goal was to actually move to the area, find work up here and be closer to our family. I'm actually from the area, from West Sacramento. And my education took me down to San Jose where I graduated with a civil engineering degree. So we're very fortunate to have moved up recently. I'm looking forward to continuing my career here with the city. And I look forward to presenting to you all projects in the future. Thank you for allowing me to make the introduction in person.
Excellent. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter on the agenda may do so at this time via teleconference by completing or submitting a speaker card to the city. If you want to make a public comment via teleconference, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom center of the screen. If you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine at the time. For those participating by Zoom or by telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. That's Stacy. For items on the agenda, a speaker will be called upon by the mayor at that point on the agenda when it is being heard. Don't bring up something yet on our agenda. We're gonna do that later. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence under provision of California Government Code. The city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on an item not on the agenda unless it has been demonstrated to be of emergency nature or need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Stacy, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do.
Excellent.
So we have one speaker card from Anil. Anil, if you'd like to come forward. Anil, you'll have three minutes, and we have a few via Zoom who have joined us that also have their hands raised.
Excellent.
Good evening, honorable mayor, city council, city manager, staff, and my beloved community members of Rancho Cordova. I'm standing here to express my sincere gratitude and thank you to Public Work Director Albert Stryker, Councilmember Dr. Sander, and Councilmember Budge, who supported and guided me through in accomplishing a master's degree in public administration. During March 2020, I have enrolled in a master's in public administration program at National University here in Rancho Cordova and have successfully completed a degree program with a distinction. Every year, many people graduate here in this community. But my motivation to pursue this program started here in these council chambers. And you all directly or indirectly part of this part of this accomplishment. Mr. Albert Stryker shared and provided the great details on Folsom Boulevard infrastructure improvements and how we made a positive impact on the city image and people's life. Albert is a rock star professional. As a community, we are grateful for his dedicated service and commitment. We are fortunate to have him as our Public Works Director. Dr. Sander and Linda provided their vision for city and shared their past history and how and what they want to see in the city. And they also explained to me what we accomplished in a short span of time and being an all-American city twice in last 10 years. It's a big accomplishment, and thank you. I also like to thank Cordova Community Council Executive Director Shelley Blanchard and Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce President and CEO Diane Rogers sharing their experience in completing my master's degree. I am proud to live in this great all-American city of Rancho Cordova. With the support of city administration, you have built a great people-centric city. The reason I'm saying this people-centric because level of engagement with community is the awesome. Imagine, can an ordinary citizen call their public officials, mayor, and ask for the guidance and support on pursuing their education? Don't believe so. In any, in any city in America can do this. For me, this city hall and this institution is one of the most visited places. Reason I said while coming home from home, my mobile phone is popping up. Your city hall is like 12 minutes from your home. I don't know how it knows, right? It has all artificial intelligence, it reads through your calendars and mails, and it says that I'm going to city hall. And this place draws motivation in serving the community. Keep up the amazing work this council is doing and keep inspiring the next generation leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, Anil.
Congratulations, Anil.
Congratulations.
Absolutely. And the only one, our sincere congratulations. Good for you. And thank you because you are an outstanding example to your community. You have organized them and motivated them and keep them motivated every day, and we really appreciate it.
The next public speaker is Angel Ball. Angel, I'm unmuting you, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, city council.
Evening, Angel.
Yep, we can hear you.
We hear you.
Okay, great. Good evening, council. My name is Angel Ball, and I'm from the Cordova Vineyards. Making of a public comment. My public comment begins with a compelling reason, something I'm concerned about, passionate about, that brings me to a city council meeting. To prepare, write, research my public comment can take hours, but it's my responsibility, so I make the time. I check my information, make sure my thoughts are complete, practice to be sure I'm within the three minutes. I have waited as long as three hours to make a public comment. There is always anxiety and stress. Then you, my elected officials, make the decision, which I believe that you've planned in advance, to limit my public comment to two minutes. Why? So you can go home, you've already made up your mind, or you really don't consider our comments. I'm not sure. These precious three minutes are the only opportunity that your constituents, my neighbors, the public, get the opportunity to speak to all five of you at the same time. Only when you see a crowd do you limit our voice. You never take time from your voice, just ours. I'm disappointed in this decision. I voted for you to represent me and my community, and if you don't listen to me or us, how do you know how to vote? On July 10th, you mailed postcards to over 78,000 residents encouraging their participation on July 19th city council meeting. We showed up and in turn we limited our voice. Just because you have the right to limit our public comment time does not make it right. You ask us to show up and we do. City staff tells us to think big and we do. Consultants tell us how unique and ambitious we are. Are we really? Of course, you know I have a suggestion on how we can turn this around, and I would like you to consider this. City council and city manager reports submitted in writing for us to read at a later time and the introductions of new employees to be done at 5 o'clock or at the end of the meeting. These two very simple actions would allow 50 to 60 minutes for the people's public comment or three minutes each. Thank you for your consideration on this very important matter. Good night.
Um, I have a quick question on this. Sorry, Stacy, not generally, but the two-minute was only on the one day, right? It's not on every meeting? City manager, anybody?
Correct. It was, it was, uh, it was, it's not regular, but it was done on one agenda item.
Got it.
The next public speaker is...
In my, in my, in my memory, it has happened three or four times in nine years.
The next public comment is from Bob Thurbin. Bob, I'm unmuting you, and you'll have three minutes.
Uh, thank you. Mayor Gatewood, my name is Bob Thurbin. I'm General Counsel for Cordova Recreation and Park District. And my item of interest is actually on the consent calendar. It's 9.8. But I anticipate since it's being continued to a future date, it might get lost in the shuffle. So I thought I'd speak up now, offer to comment now, or defer to your pleasure if you prefer it. I'll just wait till the consent as long as I have an opportunity to comment then.
Yeah, why don't we wait till we do the consent comment items, uh, calendar items?
Perfect.
All right.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
The next public comment is from Bob. Bob, I've unmuted you, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hey, Bob.
Okay. Um, just wanna kind of fill you in a little bit on some of the things that are a little bit different with the mosquito vector control board. Um, they have one thing that's, um, brand new, and it's, uh, scenario robotics scenario. It's developing a learning machine that can identify and sort mosquito samples. The machine takes pictures of mosquitoes as they go through the device. Then it uses artificial intelligence software. Now, that thing kind of, um, up to date, you might say with that. Identify the mosquitoes from the pictures. The artificial intelligence software has the ability to learn the visual characteristics of different mosquitoes, and it has the same information it gets from around the world that other machines just like it. So you can learn an awful lot very fast, and then they're saving 24 hours of, uh, work from people who work there. They can do other things. It costs about $36,000 a year. And I think it's probably one of the best things that the mosquito vector control board has done, to be able to use something like that with artificial intelligence. Um, that's smart stuff, you know? But it's very good. Couple other things that, uh, I'm on the Folsom Lake College, uh, board, and they're gonna start their classes on August 23rd. Um, they have the one, uh, lecture classes will be online rather than, rather than being there, uh, in the campus. And then, um, I guess that's about it. The, I don't have anything really new about the Food Locker. I know we have some, uh, a lot of help with the, um, Stacy Delaney and, um, Micah Runner. Um, they've been giving us some good advice from the city on what we can do to improve it there. Uh, it's gonna be going at least another two years or so while it's there, probably longer. And they thought about changing it and going someplace else, but it's gonna stay there for a while. So that's what we've got on that. So on those three boards, and, um, thank you for all the work you're doing.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would only comment that, um, now that the Defense Department is trying to, uh, figure out how to fly airplanes with artificial intelligence, I would caution Bob that those mosquitoes don't learn how to fly with artificial intelligence.
They probably already know. They've been hanging around for millions of years, you know, so... Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is going to be area code 916-804. So I'm gonna go ahead. It's a telephone. I'm gonna unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, this is Pfizer Mogo in Lincoln Village. Um, I'd like to make a comment about public comments. One of my focuses has been on encouraging others to engage civically by making public comments. The process can feel mysterious or daunting, sometimes anxiety inducing. But I feel strongly that everyone should be encouraged to share their voice if they have something they need to say and not worry about sounding silly or not being as polished as some others. Residents should be able to come as they are, and councilmembers should welcome that. We are your community. When we make the leap from quiet observer to active participant via making public comments, it is pretty disheartening to show up only to receive directives from some councilmembers on what they think we should and should not be saying at the mic, as was done at the July 19th city council meeting when the civic center was being discussed. We are your community and not your employees and not your children. There have been times where I have felt discouraged enough about making public comments based on the way some of the council and now even sometimes staff members receive or try to preempt public comments that I've wondered if encouraging others to participate and potentially have a bad experience was a mistake. But then I remember how important it is to not be silenced. I remember that this is also our space. And I understand the harm that can ensue when good people stay silent. This is my comment about public comments, how important it is for the community to hold space here and to use their voice, whatever that sounds like, and how it behoves our council to receive public comments with a little more openness and a lot less directing. I also would like to suggest that in future, if there is a need to cut time from a lengthy meeting, for example, that the time cuts don't automatically come at the public commenter's expense. I assure you, the time bloat is not always at the bottom of this pyramid. Uh, just as staff invest time with their presentations, often we too have prepped and timed our public comments in advance. Um, this is the end of my comment about public comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Pfizer.
The next speaker is Joseph Poppin. Joseph, I've unmuted you, and you'll have three minutes.
Uh, good evening. Uh, I'm Joseph Poppin. I'm, I'm the counsel for, um, the applicant on agenda item 11.1, the Echo Site 2 telecommunication tower. And on behalf of the applicant, I, we'd like to request that this matter be continued to the next council meeting on August 16.
Hey, guys, hey, hey, hold on one second.
Yeah, we would do that then.
We're gonna wanna, we're gonna want you to come in at 11.1. So let's, uh, let's hold off on that. And, uh, did you actually have an agendaized item? So hold that thought. You're gonna testify when it comes up to 11.1.
Okay.
All right, not a problem.
Mayor Gatewood, that's all the public comment that we have at this time.
Excellent. All right, let's get into council reports, and I'm gonna start this off with Siri Pupade. Siri? There you are.
Uh, yeah, yeah. I'm just trying to get off mute. It has to be. I got the bingo. Okay. Um, first off, I'd like to congratulate Anil on, you know, his, uh, masters. It's a huge accomplishment. Um, and actually indirectly thank council because of his involvement with civic service and his involvement in public community service. I got involved i-in getting back to the community, and here I am. So thank you, council. You're indirectly responsible for me being here. So be happy or sad, it's your fault.
Nice.
Also... Um, let's see. Uh, which also says that to your comment, right? Please come up with public comments because we need that. The more active you are, the more, uh, feedback, you know, council gets in order to be better at our job and the staff gets at their job. Um, I'm not gonna do reports today because the events that I've attended have also been attended by peers, and they've probably covered it. Um, I wanna highlight one point. Well, today is National Dinosaur Day. Today, we celebrate these large extinct reptiles. And because of a huge asteroid that hit Earth, the asteroid that is hitting Earth today is our pandemic. And the virus now is Delta Virus. Rancho Cordova has got 99% vaccination, vaccination rate. So thank you, everybody. You guys are the best. Now, it's time for you to educate your friends and your neighbors to get vaccinated. So we get back on track, and we come there and sit in our council to hear, uh, these meetings live. So thank you, Rancho Cordova, for being one of the best.
Thank you, Siri. And we're gonna skip David and go straight to Linda. Linda?
Thank you, Siri. I, I, I have been sitting here, uh, wondering what in the world Dino Day was, so I appreciate that. Um, Siri, as Siri is right, uh, a couple of us have been sort of running around the, uh, community together. Siri and I were privileged to attend the dedication of Station 61 on Folsom Boulevard for the late, uh, Bob Warner. And, um, I talked about that before. It was absolutely heartwarming. Uh, they had a huge turnout, and, um, and I appreciate Siri for coming to support a gentleman that she never met and, um, and just supporting our firefighters in general. Um, several of us intended to, uh, attended the grand opening for one of our newest restaurants, Bag It Up, which is the location that started off as one of the, um, um, Mexican quickserves like Poya Local, and I don't remember what the name of it was. And then it was two different barbecue restaurants, and now hopefully, uh, Bag It Up, uh, their family has 35 years in the restaurant industry in the Bay Area. And, um, Garrett can talk a little bit more about that, but we certainly hope they are successful in that location. LAFCO, the local agency formation commission that I represent Rancho Cordova to, has a new executive director for the first time in over 20 years. It's actually only the third executive director that LAFCO has ever had. And they hired a gentleman with incredible experience because he spent 18 years in that role in El Dorado County. Um, his name is Jose Enriquez, and, um, Cyrus and I met with him the other day. He certainly has a lot of credentials, a lot of knowledge about the LAFCO processes in general. We used the opportunity to talk to him about the goal that we had in our city council goal to, um, create logical boundaries for the city of Rancho Cordova. And, uh, I think Cyrus, in his report, might say that we got a very receptive ear. He certainly, um, um, seems to be an asset in going through a process like that. Uh, Siri and Garrett and I were at the community council awards. Garrett had a major role. Um, he can talk about that. It was very heartwarming. We, we had a great time. Surprised somebody who had no idea she was gonna be surprised, and it was, and we, Cyrus organized it and pulled it off, and it was perfect. Um, the most important thing, I hope everyone will pay attention tonight, to our consent calendar agenda item 9.3. We are finally able, thanks to LAFCO Regional Transit, to provide some additional public transportation to sections of our growing community. There are going to be several new routes that will go out and, that will extend themselves from where they are currently and, uh, and offer people an opportunity to take public transportation into the part of Rancho Cordova, or to light rail of wherever they need to go. And this is a nine-month, uh, 10-month pilot, and we hope it will be successful so that we can continue some of these, um, um, public transportation opportunities. So that's my report, Garrett. Garrett, you disappeared.
I'm back. Thank you very much. Uh, go ahead, Donald.
Thanks. And yeah, um, Siri, I'm, I'm trying to bring up that map because, yes, we definitely wanna praise our, our zip codes that are in the high 90s with their vaccination rates, but not all of our zip codes are there. So I would still, I would still urge anyone and everyone that can get a shot, go get one. Um, I think I was in Costco last week, and you can pick your, 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 your vaccine. You can get Johnson &amp; Johnson, Pfizer, or Moderna. And so, please, everyone, go get them. We're, we're having to put masks back on. You know, at a time when you have literally the highest, uh, uh, COVID rate day or, or, or instances of people getting, testing positive ever in Florida. The following day, they passed a law, um, not allowing teachers or students to wear masks at school. Like, thank God we're not there, but we still could be safer and we could still be trying harder. So please, please, please go get vaccinated because we do have communities that are not 99%. I still question how, that it's that high in some other places, but it's higher than it is anywhere else, and that's a great job. With that, I would say, um... With that, I would say, I haven't had a lot of boards and commissions. We have in Elk Grove Unified Two by Two coming up. We did have an air district meeting last week. Not a whole lot to report. You know, I know we've been working with the Purple Air and some other things recently, but luckily so far we haven't had more than one or two real smoke days. I know we had a pretty bad one last week. But we've been spared for the most part so far just because of the way the winds are blowing, but just keep an eye on that and check the air district's app every day, please, and keep an eye on it because we still are having ozone days, we're still having unhealthy air, even without the smoke, there are still other things in the air that you wanna pay attention to. And I think the only other thing is the executive director, Dr. Ayala's four-year anniversary as the executive director came this past month. We are keeping him around as long as he will stay around. We think he's done a great job in replacing Larry Green and we've been really, really happy with him, the entire board was really pleased with his performance. And so he'll still be here. I think that's all that I saw on my calendar recently. Again, a lot of the school district meetings are kinda dormant right now and kinda pick them up starting next, or this week with Elk Grove, who just, their schools and our city went back a couple weeks ago. Want to encourage everybody to attend the 10th birthday celebration for the Children's Museum on Saturday. There's gonna be a short reception at 9:30 and then the whole event for the public starts at 10 o'clock and runs until about noon. Should be a lot of fun inside and outside of the museum. I'd also like to thank the museum. You know, as a family member, my son was able to attend one of their week-long camps there and they're looking to do a few more. So if anybody has children, I believe it was like five to eight or nine, somewhere in there, maybe it's, actually I think he might have even said there was a 10-year-old there. You know, take a look at that. So I know there were a lot less camps this summer than in normal years, but you know, take a look at that. It was a very reasonably priced thing, it was like $120 bucks or something. And yeah, we also have, actually it looks like we have the SAC City Unified Two by Two on Wednesday as well. So hopefully a little bit more to report in the future and not just looking back. And looking forward to hopefully seeing more people out at National Day.
Hey, Donald, Donald.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we add to the Children's Museum? One of my absolutely favorite events ever, the grandparents butterfly release day is coming up in September.
Yes, and you can buy your butterflies now.
It's just the most delightful, laid-back, perfectly beautiful thing to do. So for anybody who has not done that, please go on the museum website and get signed up and buy yourself a butterfly or two.
Yeah, and just for anybody who's been to it before, this is really important. So that's a partnership with Snowline Hospice, but unlike past years where a lot of us have, well, I bought mine ahead of time, but a lot of people showed up and bought butterflies onsite and had to wait in a very long line. You cannot buy onsite this year, as far as I know. You have to go online, buy them ahead of time, they'll have them ready there for you. It's a really wonderful event, Linda. Yeah, I totally agree with you. It was a lot of fun. We even did it last year virtually. You picked them up, took them home and released them yourself. It's a really nice event, especially if we get to do it all together.
I have to tell you, there truly was a monarch that showed up from time to time in the yard out front where the kids and I had stood there and released all our butterflies. So you know, that's the idea, to get them all to stick around and they really, at least one of them did.
Yeah, and I think you said it's a celebration of grandparents' day. So it's that, so it's a celebration of that, it's a fundraiser for them, you buy the butterflies, they give you a little box of them, you warm them up in your hands and then let them go. You can pick what kind of butterflies, you have a couple different ones. But yeah, it's a wonderful event. Thanks, Linda. And thanks for the reminder.
Butterfly box.
Yeah, that's it. Great. Yeah, thank you. That's all I got.
Well, hopefully we'll see everybody there. Thank you, Donald. All right. Rancho Cordova's starting to turn back on. Hopefully we can keep this progress going and the COVID starts to delay a little bit. But here's what everything I've got into. So first, congratulations, Shelley, to the volunteer awards and all our amazing citizens in Rancho Cordova. You can truly see the lifeblood of Rancho Cordova when you go to these awards. We met the guy, the last of the people that know how to drive the fire truck. Those people are amazing. And then my favorite guy, who's the guy that always does the VA? Who's the one who does, unmute yourself. Bob what? Hit the button.
Bob Burns.
Oh, I love Bob Burns. I chastised him for not singing in this one, but he's the funniest guy because he's like the king of one-liners and I was waiting for him to keep going. So thank you, Shelley, for that. That's an amazing part. Shelley Blanchard is the one by our, Cyrus slipped in and told her, she's basically one of the lifebloods of the Cordova Community Council. So really well-earned. And then congratulations to River City Christian for all the volunteer work you guys do. Great job getting that award. I then signed the certificates and congratulations to all my summer city hall students, graduation, great job, guys. This was their graduates last week, so that was great. I got to talk to the Asian Chamber of Commerce, they're really interested in how Rancho Cordova is changing and growing, even during these COVID times. I went to Zach's Bar and Grill Grand Re- reopening. It was amazing, good food, a great location. Did the ribbon cutting for Endurance Sports. It's always good to see a new business take over where the, next to the Togos. And so they're up and running and doing full. Hopefully I'll see Albert in there buying gear so he can do his first triathlon. I saw you come in, so I just rolled you into it. We are going to be featured in Comstock Mortgage, an interview talking about the growth of the city and all the economic development and how Rancho Cordova happens to be an amazing place to work, live, and grow. The JP meeting, Linda was there for it. I couldn't figure out how to get in, even though I run a computer company, felt real bad about that, but luckily one of us showed up. The funny thing is, is I went to the ribbon cutting for Back It Up and Bag Get It Up, which I thought from my generation came from Back It Up, which is a rap song, and I thought that was hilarious that they, yes, back it up. Bag It Up, Bag Get It Up is an amazing location full of meat and bread. So I have little boys and their favorite food is meat and bread. So I hope that every citizen goes and welcomes these new businesses. And as you can see, we are opening and growing even in the middle of COVID. I was able to, after the meeting, I was able to, our meeting talking about the civic amenities, civic center, community center area, I was able to go off and have a separate meeting with Angel Ball and Autumn, and we talked about more communication. And so I am, hopefully, will have a long write-ups for you guys. And so prior to our meeting, I'm hoping to go out and do a bunch of civic outreach. If you guys have any questions, reach out to FISA, because I'm gonna partner with her to make sure I get in front of everyone so everyone's voice can be heard before we get to the dice, because I wanna hear from everybody. And Angel and Autumn, thank you so much for taking your personal time and being out there. It was fun because they showed up and they set up a table and chairs and a tarp and we were out in the heat watching and talking about the civic area and what could go there. And so I'm gonna have all my time and we'll put that in there, but I wanna make sure that everyone feels like they were heard. So I will make time to go into different areas of Rancho. I'll reach out to Citizensry to help me book the times and hopefully I can hear from everybody and show all the stuff early so everyone will have their voice, at least to me, and then they'll have an idea of what we're gonna be discussing. Met with Mark Spasiak. There is amazing stuff on the way from our hotel district. Be prepared, I can't really talk much about it, but there is some great amenities on their way. And lastly, congratulations to Rancho Soccer, it officially met. We're gonna be launching. I sense that my soccer team will blow everybody away, but that just might be me being ridiculous. But I'm excited and I'm glad to see our sports are back because our kids really need that way to step out and be a part of the community. So let's support our sports on their way out the door. And that's it for me. I'm gonna hand it off to Cyrus for our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few brief items that I wanted to update the council and the community on. First of all, the recognition that Cordova Community Council had for community volunteers on Friday night was an extremely successful event. Heartwarming to see all the volunteers in the community, the amazing work that they do. We managed to pull off a surprise for Shelley Blanchard herself. She does a great deal of good work behind the scenes. She's very humble and not often out there to take credit for the work she does. So we were able to, with the help of some individuals, to give her a recognition, a well-deserved and long overdue recognition on Friday night. And we hope to continue or to follow up with the recognition at the city council. I also wanted to point out, and Mr. Mayor mentioned about the youth at the city hall. We had the Summer at the City Hall program with the youth. They prepared and presented a graduation TikTok video and a presentation, amazingly well-done, nicely done. And we hope, I understand that that video was taped and we hope to make that available. It is amazing to see the level of good thinking and good work that went into that presentation. And lastly, I wanted to recognize our public works team for amazing work that they do and also that they were, four of their projects were recognized by the Sacramento chapter of the American Public Works Associations as the Projects of the Year. Those projects include the work right next to the city hall at Zinfandel Complex, our Folsom Boulevard specific, I'm sorry, streetscape plan, the last phase, and the sunrise rehab work and the work that they did to improve that section of the road and our backway projects on Rod Bodri and Rutiya Road were all selected in different categories by American Public Works Association. So good work, team, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent, thanks, Cyrus. All right, we're gonna move on to--
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question for the city manager.
Yes, Siri. Go ahead.
At the last meeting, at the last council meeting, we asked for an update on the fireworks. And you know, if you have a report out on that, was it this meeting, Cyrus, or was it gonna be in a future meeting that we get an update on the number of citations given? And any update on that one?
I did present, I'm sorry, I did present some statistics on that. If you're specifically interested in the number of citations, I think they were about 10 citations issued. Not sure that if every one of them would be supportable based on the evidence, but it's, that's the tentative information we have and that information has also been placed on the city's website. So I'll make sure that you, the council and the community receives the most up-to-date information on that.
Cyrus, can I ask a follow-up to that question?
Yes.
Because by passing the ordinance, we weren't just empowering our police and code enforcement to issue citations, but also the fire district was able to use the same rules, I believe, that, I don't know if the city attorney's way in there, but I thought once it was in municipal code or the penal code, I don't know, I think it's municipal code that we adopted it to. So is your answer inclusive of the fire district or just PD and code enforcement?
The numbers I gave you are related to the city staff, city personnel, code and PD. I will defer to the city attorney about the fire district. Adam, would you like to elaborate on that?
Yes, sure. They were involved in the enforcement collaboration. They are not under our jurisdiction to enforce separately--
Oh, they're doing it, okay.
But they were, they were a close partner in the effort.
Okay. But they can't use the ordinance that we adopted to cite fireworks users?
Yeah, we, the enforcement was by a specific team that included the city code, city fire. So there wasn't, the work was not independent by either, by either or any jurisdiction.
Okay, okay. And just to clarify, because you did say something, I know you didn't mean that. You said city fire, you meant metro fire--
Sac, sac.
--which is a separate government from the city.
Sac, metro fire, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, so if we had a report out could be posted on, hey, we did, we passed this ordinance and so this is the advantage of doing this, and so next year what else we could do, or do we pass this kind of an ordinance earlier? So that would be beneficial.
Absolutely. I think this is intended to be an ongoing conversation throughout the year because we know the illegal fireworks are not specific or not an issue just during the Fourth of July. They do happen throughout the year. We wanna learn from our own experiences and also dealing with, working with other jurisdictions to see what lessons they have learned and what we could do. Overall, it is a difficult challenge. It is, it is a tough issue and unfortunately, some, you know, it is also somewhat difficult to detect in some cases. But the idea was to be able to do some, use this as a deterrent and make sure that we are very serious about this enforcement and we're very serious about the threats and the dangers that these illegal fireworks create. We are in a drought year. Fire danger is real. It's not, it's something that we can, can end up in catastrophe. So that's, that's one of the other elements of this program is education and we want to continue that education on an ongoing basis.
Yeah.
So a follow-up question to Siri's comments then. Did the ordinance that we passed actually have a sunset date on it?
No, it doesn't.
I didn't, I didn't--
No.
Adam, so the key, as I understand it, the key to this is for local residents in various neighborhoods to be able to say, my next-door neighbor has illegal fireworks in his backyard. It can't just be, I can hear them and they're probably at the intersection of Zinfandel and Data Drive. You know, it's that kind of thing. We, and I will say around here, it's been very quiet, but we all know that this is a problem again around New Year's and it's probably going on, we see on Nextdoor incidents of it happening throughout the year at various times, regardless of what's happening.
Very true.
So it's in, but it's in effect. We didn't put a sunset date on it, so if people hear something, they can still call.
Yes, 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 Councilmember Budge. And it's, as you pointed out, it's very important that in reporting those incidents, that we receive as much specific details as we possibly can because working on the basis of in the general vicinity or two blocks away doesn't really help our crews to be able to effectively enforce this.
All right, so we'll move on to consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item. Item for an individual consideration, all items may be approved in one motion. At this moment, I'm going to pull 9.8 because at one time my tech company did have a relationship with the Cordova Community Council and now it does not, but they have a lawyer that's wishing to testify on that and so I don't want him to testify because I have to step out of the room. So besides that--
Garrett, we, Garrett, hang on. If we have a public comment, we gotta pull that one anyway, so that's not a problem. You'll need to repeat yourself for the comment anyway.
Okay.
I'll move over to 9.1 through 9.7.
I have--
I'll second the motion.
I have some public comment first for the consent calendar.
Is there any other items besides nine, because I gotta pull the ones that they have consent, which ones are they?
9.2, I have a emailed public comment and 9.8.
Okay, so let's pull nine--
Are they both emailed?
Yes.
Wait, 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 hang on. No. Are they both emailed?
No, the 9.8 one is, there's an actual lawyer--
Wait, can, I understand. Stacy, can you answer my question? Were the two comments that you just said, are they both emailed?
Yes.
No, they're not.
No, 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 they are.
Can somebody let her answer, please? Are they both, are both of those public comments emailed?
Yes.
Okay, can you read the names and then we can adopt the calendar?
Yes. So the first public comment is for item 9.2, it is FISA McGall. The second written public comment is 9.8. It is from Robert Thurbin. And the public comment will be available--
Okay, well, no, so 9.8 we're pulling.
I understand.
Okay, so the one for 9.8 they're pulling. Okay, so that one's separate, but we have a written comment that will be in the record. We have a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
I'll see a public comment on 9.3. Donald Childs.
Oh. About regional transit?
Yes.
Stacy, did you get that?
We, we, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at Persephone. I believe that we received that after, the city clerk's office received that after the start of the meeting. So I-
Yeah, he sent it at 5:42, but we all have it.
Okay.
And it'll be in the record.
And I, and I don't have it yet.
Uh, yeah, you got it at 5:42.
Okay.
Or at least, that's when I got it in my inbox.
It's been on Zoom since 5:30, Donald.
Right. No, I, well, I have the phone sitting here and it came up on the iPad that I'm watching, doing this meeting on.
So can we say what's in the public comment? Stacy, that way, I, I, for 9.3 or 9.2?
If they're, if they come in written, they're usually included in the record.
Okay.
Okay, but, but Siri, you have-
That's what I'm saying, we don't-
Siri, you have a really good point. At regional transit, the clerk reads the first, like, 250 words of a public comment regardless. And we, we know that FISA was concerned about there being Wi-Fi installed with the remodel of Matherfield Road. That part I know.
Yeah.
I don't have anything from Donald Childs. Donald, I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay. So if he is for it or against it, and this isn't the consent calendar, can we say what it is for, that he is for it or against it?
So I haven't, I mean-
I don't think it's necessarily that simple.
So I would, this is the city attorney. I would suggest that you either ask staff to read a public comment, an email in its entirety up to a certain amount of time, up to three minutes or a certain word count. Or that you, it might be difficult for staff to summarize someone's comments.
Yeah.
Often, someone's comments may be nuanced and subtle and yes on some issues or no on some issues or a refinement of the public discourse. So it might be quite difficult for staff to accurately summarize someone's comments rather than to read them.
In this context, for 9.3 from Donald Childs, I can summarize it if-
If we, if you'd like to pull the item, we can discuss an item. But if we're, if we're adopting the consent agenda, we don't discuss the-
Okay.
Agenda. We can pull it. I have no problem with it, if somebody wants to.
I was just bringing up the point that there was a public comment on 9.3. That was-
I have found Donald's comments if, but, but here we have a process thing, okay? So we don't want process to get in the way of progress. On the other hand, when the city, when the city clerk's office asks the public comment to come in at a certain time, we may all have the benefit of having seen it. But in terms of asking the city clerk to read it, that's a different issue. So I can tell you that Donald's first sentence is that he supports this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess my only, the only thing I want to say about it is that the consent agenda should be things that we don't need to talk about. If we need to talk about them, like there's a public comment, that's totally fine. We should pull it from the consent agenda and read it into the record and have a discussion about it. But if it's going to be in consent, we shouldn't, staff and us have deemed that we don't need to talk about it. So if a public comment comes in that's an email, then we should be pulling those items if we're going to read anything.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I will pull nine, I will pull 9.3 from that list.
Okay. I'll support, I'll, I'll reiterate my second for that motion. That's fine.
Okay.
So we're pulling 9.3 and 9.8.
All right, and then we're going to, and then we have a first, then can I have another motion on the other ones?
I, I mean, again, I don't want to be in the way of process and progress, but this comment is supporting the consent calendar.
Wait, but for that item, we're going to talk about it. We're now, we're now-
We don't need to talk about it, right? Because we're in consent.
Too late, it just got pulled. It's too late, it's too late.
No, no, listen, Siri, if we're going to bring up the public comment, we can't pass it in consent. That's what I'm saying.
We don't want it. We'll just do 9.1, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I changed my motion.
And do we have a second?
We're going to vote.
Yeah, I already reiterated my second.
All right.
So for clarity, we are pulling 9.3 and 9.8.
Correct.
And we have a motion by Budge and a second by Terry.
Correct.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander is absent. Vice Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood.
Yes. Stacy, can you-
I would just like to mention that on the front page of our agenda, we do know that emails come in and the clerk's office does check our inbox up until 3 o'clock, as stated on the agenda, so that we have time to print the public comment, place it on our website, and email it to council and/or staff involved. Emails that come in after that time, obviously, we're running a meeting and it's, we can't be checking our inbox at every moment. And so that has been our practice, as stated on the first page of the agenda.
And I would also just reiterate that any, anyone who submits a public comment after 3 o'clock is, of course, welcome to participate on the Zoom call or in-person in the council meeting and to read all of, or three minutes of that same written comment. So you're, you're certainly being fully able to participate in the process just in person rather than in writing exclusively.
All right.
Adam, and I will, I will move approval of 9.3 with the acknowledgement that Donald was fully supportive and encourages our adoption.
I second. Thank you, Siri.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander is absent. Vice Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood.
Aye. So I'm going to excuse myself at this time. I'm going to let Donald run the meeting because at one point, I did have a contract with the Cordova Park District. And I no longer have that contract, but I need to excuse myself. Thank you.
Stacy, can you let me know when he's left the room?
He has left the room. And I did, did want to just acknowledge under this item that we did have the written comment that was submitted via email by Bob Thurbin for 9.8.
Okay, but he, he's on the caller there, correct?
I know. I just wanted to, yes, I just wanted to acknowledge his email. Are you okay with me unmuting him right now? Vice Mayor Terry?
Yeah, 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 that's fine.
I have a quick question on this. Since the mayor has no-
Siri, do we, Siri, do we want to take the public comments and then we can answer questions?
Yeah, 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 okay.
The staff? Okay, let's do that first.
Bob, I've unmuted you and you'll have to-
Thank you.
Bye, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Terry and members of the council. I've already introduced myself previously. Reminder, I'm Bob Thurbin, General Counsel for Cordova Recreation Park District. The written comments, I wouldn't necessarily prevail upon you to read those into the record. The document stands for itself, and I submitted that to you earlier. So it did become a part of the written administrative record of the whole process that we've been keeping our eye on. I know the way this is agendized, as, as written on 9.8, does not lend itself to having the council take action to rescind your June 7th action. But our request is respectful request this evening is that the council move swiftly to, by way of special meeting or otherwise, to set an agenda item here quickly and rescind the action that was taken on June 7th. I respect and appreciate the fact that you're moving the final approval of the ordinance down the road a bit, but it doesn't solve the issues that we think exceed the jurisdiction from the action that you took in on June 7th. And we don't think those things are cured. We did send a written request on the 14th of June that identified a couple of things that we believe were critically important. Perhaps the most critically important part was the rescension of the June 7th actions. And recall that we presented some comprehensive points and, and issues for the council to consider. And the rescission hasn't been accomplished, and this, tonight, it's not going to be accomplished. So with that, my purpose here this evening is to renew the original points that we made back on June 7th regarding our concerns about the legality of the steps that the city is taking to name itself as the parks provider and to take control and dedication of parkland within the district's jurisdiction and to, again, respectfully request that you rescind that action in the immediate future. And we hope that you will seriously consider our request and perhaps rethink the strategy that generated the June 7th action. And with that, I thank you for your time. Thank you for listening. And thank you for including the information as part of the administrative record in this proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Siri, you had a question or a comment? Siri was-
No, no, I got, I'm fine.
Okay.
Cyrus has a comment. I will move to continue the item to a date uncertain.
Are we continuing this item, Cyrus?
Yes.
Yes, council, yes.
That's what was advertised.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to continue? Do I have a second?
Yes, I second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander is absent. Mayor Gatewood has recused himself. Vice Mayor Terry.
Well, if he missed, okay, yes, or aye. Okay, so we've dispensed with item 9.8. I don't think we have anything else that Garrett's going to need to recuse himself. So let's go ahead and call him back into the room.
Do they need to recuse himself or a continuance or for the public comment?
For all of it, for the vote. To take any, to take any action on it.
For now. All right, so let's go on to consent public, public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items may be approved in one motion. I'm going to ask the city clerk to announce the subject.
They're consent items?
I don't know why it's on here. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Just going. So I'm going to open the public hearing item, and then I'm going to ask if there's any public comment.
There is no public comment that I've received public speaker cards for, nor do I see any hands raised in Zoom, except now, well, there was a hand raised, but now it's not raised anymore. So for the items on the consent calendar, there are no public comments.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if any council wishes to-
Who the item?
And-
No, I will move item 10.1, 10.2, and 10.3.
I second.
All right, roll call.
I did that first, and okay.
I second the second. I third the second.
No, I thought I moved the item. It's good, just.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander is absent. Vice Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood.
Aye. All right, we're going to go to public hearing items. Oh, wait, we already done that. Now we're on to regular guidelines.
Now, we're on public hearing items.
Yeah, we already did 11.1, right? Okay. All right, 11.1, public hearing items. All right, I'm going to go ahead and ask Stacy to read the subject.
The subject is the Echo Site 2 Cellular Communication Tower at the southeast corner of Zinfandel Drive and Folsom Boulevard, Conditional Use Permit Project DD 10018.
Can I ask a question of Cyrus and staff before we get a full staff presentation on this?
All right, go ahead.
Did I hear that the applicant's representative is in the audience and is requesting the continuance?
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, actually, the applicant is on, I believe he's on the Zoom and they requested the continuance.
Okay, so, so my question to staff is, is that not something we want to do?
Yeah, we could just continue it since the-
It's a, it's a council call.
I'm, I'm asking.
Okay. I want to make-
Do we want to, go ahead, go ahead.
I want to make two comments about this. Obviously, this is a completely different, fortunately, for my perspective, this is a completely different proposal. And I have two very specific comments on, on their proposal. And I, if we're going to continue this, I would prefer to make those comments now so that they have the benefit of what I'm suggesting.
So fair enough. I guess my, my only question would be, if you have specific recommendations, do we go through the entire staff presentation and ask the applicant to give their reasoning by they want a continuance and then decide if we want to grant that and then give them guidance? Which would mean do the whole item and then we're going to continue it anyway?
So, so-
I think the-
This is very, this is just very awkward, this. We're, we're at the point of doing the presentation and the applicant's asking for a continuance. That usually happens long before we get here.
In this context, my understanding is since a few of us have read the report and if the council, if they're going to come back with a proposal, it's best that they hear the comments. So if they come back with that again, and then we have to continue it again, it's best that Linda gives her, you know, feedback. And they incorporate it or not, but they've heard it now, and they come back with that response. And we don't have to go through this presentation if we're going to continue it anyways. But definitely hear feedback what we have so far.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm fine with that. It's just, this is just pretty strange that we've got an item here, we're going to hear it and then continue it.
We're not going to hear it. We're not going to hear it. Linda's just going to give her comments. That's it.
No, they, we were actually going to hear it.
That doesn't seem appropriate.
Mr. Mayor-
Hold on, Cyrus. Hold on, guys. Go ahead, Cyrus.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if I may suggest a route for the discussion. Since this item was publicly noticed, first of all, I think we should open the public hearing. So for any members of the public who may be here or may want to comment on this item has the opportunity. We also did hear from the representative, the applicant, that they're interested to continue the item. It would probably be appropriate to understand their reasoning and their logic and then for the council to consider after public testimony whether they want to discuss the item tonight or simply continue it to another date.
All right.
By default, if the applicant is not ready, I think we should not continue with that. That, that should be the case. They're not prepared and they wish to continue. It's not even a council call at this point, but-
Well, no, it's absolutely a council call because it's an agendized item. We have to decide if we want to continue something. I've just never been in the position, when applicant comes to a city council meeting and asks for a continuance of an item that we're about to present, that's usually just pulled from the agenda. But we have a councilor that wants to weigh in and give guidance. If we're going to do that, we should hear the presentation from staff. But this is just kooky to me, so.
All right, so let's, let's go with the kookiness. So Cyrus, do you want to just do the presentation and then, and then, and then have the, hear from us? Or do you want the, do you want to get the, do we want to talk to the people real quick and decide whether they want to just move on to the next one?
I think it's, obviously, it's obviously the wish of the council, but it may be appropriate to hear public testimony first.
And, and our recommendation again is that in order to hear from the applicant, you would open the public hearing, hear why they want you to continue the item.
Okay, let me do that. Let me just, let's start with that. I'm going to open the public-
Wait, 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 Garrett, wait.
So close.
So, but if you're going to take public comment and council comment and open a public hearing, you should give the content of the staff presentation before you do that.
That was not the city manager's recommendation just a moment ago.
I mean, there's no, there's no context except for the people that have gone and, and researched this, this item. Anyone sitting in the public doesn't know what this is.
All right. So, okay, okay, so here's what we're going to do, guys. We're going to, we're going to do the presentation. I'm going to open it up. We're going to hear why the guy wants to extend it, and then we're going to decide whether we're going to let him extend it. So I'm going to go ahead, call on- So I'm gonna go ahead, call on Mrs. Cowell. Go ahead and start with the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. June Cowells with the Planning Department. Wait for this to come up. So the Echo Site Telecommunication Tower. This was continued from June 7th, and just a quick reminder on the project request of a conditional use permit for development of a 50-foot-high telecommunications tower. So the site location is between, it's off of Folsom Boulevard, between the grocery outlet and Target store. So at the June 7th, uh, city council meeting, the project was continued because city council requests for additional information and design concerns. So the additional information was regarding coverage and quality improvements within the areas along Zinfandel Drive and Folsom Boulevard. So the applicant provided a dropped, drop call map. The red outline circles indicate dropped connections, and then the yellow outline circles indicated a failed attempt. And then the, this is a coverage map showing the green areas in good coverage. The pinpoint or the push-button pin on there symbolizes the site location, and the orange area is weak coverage. So the cell tower design at the city council meeting on June 7th, we heard from city council members discussion about features of placemaking monument to the city. And so staff looked at this Folsom Boulevard and Zinfandel Drive area and thought about, what is this theme? And it's a place of gathering, people come here to shop and dine, and the, also the light rail station is nearby. So the silhouettes of the people located around the enclosure wall reference to the people gathering in the area. We included, or the applicant also had Rancho Cordova atop border with the skyline of buildings. So the outline on the building on this design, it was just an example. And they also relocated the entry gate to the enclosed area, and that's on the southern side. So it's away from the Folsom Boulevard. And so the next one, couple maps are showing the photo simulations from two different views. This is the view from Zinfandel Drive. And the view from Folsom Boulevard. And that's just a bigger coverage area. And a reminder, the clock tower design from the June 7th city council meeting. And with that, staff recommends the city council, the project is compliant with CEQA as exempt on 15303. And if city council requests additional design revisions, a condition can be added that reflects the revisions, and the applicant will work with staff to finalize the design and adopt the resolution approving the Echo Site Telecommunication Tower.
All right. All right, thank you.
For the presentation.
We're gonna go ahead and open public hearing item. And can I have the applicant jump on real quick and tell us why he needs it continued?
Uh, yes, Mayor, this is Joseph Poppin of the Brian K. Leighton Page-Ner Law Firm, reporting for the applicant.
All right.
The, we, we requested the matter be continued to the next meeting on August 16th such that the, the full city council can evaluate and vote on the application, particularly because Councilmember Sanders' comments at the prior meeting were largely what inspired or what led to this particular design.
Okay. All right. I'm okay with, can, can, do we have time to continue to the next meeting, Cyrus?
It is, it is the council's wish and desire, if that is their wish.
All right. So I'm, go, do I have a motion to go ahead and continue to the next meeting?
I think Lynda had some comments.
Oh, Lynda, do you wanna do comments first?
Yeah, we need to know if, yeah, always comments before motions, Garrett.
Okay, go ahead.
We need to know whether there's any other public comment.
Okay, go ahead.
We need to know whether there's any other public comment.
Oh, Stacy, do we have public comment?
I did not receive any speaker cards for this item, and there is no one other than Joseph Poppin with his hand raised in Zoom.
Yeah, that's what I saw, so that's why I said...
Actually, I can...
Still raised, too, yeah, as you say that.
Great.
I, I'd also, I'd also like to acknowledge that if this item needs to be noticed, I don't know that the city clerk's office necessarily has enough time in preparation of August 16th, so I'm... Okay, 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 very good.
All right. I'm gonna, Lynda, did you wanna say a couple things real quick?
I do, Garrett, thank you. So, um, so, um, this thing made me kinda laugh. I mean, because I really didn't like the clock tower at all. I mean, as much as I'm a fan of civic clocks, I, I didn't like this at all. And, um, but this one kinda made me smile and made me chuckle. But, um, but now that we have this kind of iconic tower, all of a sudden, it's become an art piece, from my perspective. And so in that regard, I have three comments. Number one, um, I did take it to representatives of the arts community, and, uh, we have a sneaky feeling that, number one, that kind of sky blue color is not going to wear well with time, both from an environmental standpoint as well as from a design standpoint. And I know that we have, we are working with a city color palette right now, and it may be that a blue from that color palette would work better. Certainly, something a little bit darker that, um, that might wear, wear better. And, and it, just like, just as in our homes and our public spaces, we see colors evolve. On the other hand, if this one is a little bit darker blue, it might last for a longer period of time than the, the sky blue that's there right now. Secondly, there's a question about the images on the fencing. It seems like just four or five panels of the same little people over and over again. And so the question is, I understand your point about the people and this being a gathering place, but would some sort of a representation of the river or the American River Parkway work better? So that's just a question. Thirdly, fortunately, um, it says that the skyline that's on there is just a representation. We're glad because it's the city of Sacramento and the Tower Bridge. And quite frankly, guys, um, our city seal has a nice Rancho Cordova skyline. And if you can see the picture behind me, the colored one, that would be the Chamber of Commerce logo that we used for about 10 years. And the artist on that one actually put a lot of the buildings that are representative here in Rancho Cordova into that. So we do have a couple of examples of, um, Rancho Cordova skylines that the, that your artist could draw from. So I have those three comments to make in terms of guiding you and how you want to finalize this.
Excellent. Thank you, Lynda. Uh, anyone else have some comments for, uh, the applicant? All right.
And I will move that...
Wait, wait, let me close, wait, wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. Go ahead and close the public hearing now, go.
I will move that we continue item 11.1 to, uh, the 16th, if Stacy's okay with that?
Yes.
All right, do I have a second?
I second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Aye. All right, let's go on to regular calendar items. So I'm gonna let you get everyone off and in. I like where you, Joseph, I like where you guys are going with this.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so...
Pleased to be here.
Excuse me, Council, could we go back actually to the last item? I, I think at the end, we heard you close the public hearing, and that would require us to renotice it.
Okay, so do I need to reopen it back up?
Could we double back with Council and actually ask you to remake that motion with just the motion to continue it?
Okay. Guys, can we have a motion to just continue?
I'll move that we just continue item 11.1 to the 16th of August with the public hearing to remain open.
I second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander is absent. Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yes. All right.
Thank you very much.
So now we're gonna go on to regular calendar items. Stacy, can you go ahead and read the subject of the calendar item?
Update and direction on workforce recovery program. Notice of funding availability proposals received.
Okay, very excited about this. All right. Amanda, go ahead with our staff report.
Make sure the mics are on. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Amanda Norton, the Economic Development Manager for the city. Next slide, please. So a little bit of background on this project. A workforce recovery program was discussed as a key initiative to be funded by Measure R. This occurred through the visioning sessions that were held through January and February. And really, what a workforce recovery program is designed to do is to help residents who are looking to pivot during the pandemic, either enter into a new career path or to be able to obtain particular skills that will help them to advance within their current career path. For the NOFA or the Notice of Funding Availability, there were nine proposals that were, were received. And in addition, through part of the Community Enhancement Fund, there were four proposals that were workforce-related that were also sent to the Economic Development Department. We did review those and did approve a few of those, but they were completely separate from this NOFA, but we just wanted to make sure that, we know that there's some other projects out there. And during the study sessions that occurred previously with the council, we had initially discussed funding this particular initiative somewhere between $500,000 to $1 million. Again, the, really, the, the whole impetus for this is for all of our residents that are either unemployed, underemployed, or really are looking to upscale and receive additional training to help them compete for higher-wage jobs. And it's really designed so that it covers a variety of classes. So for some of our residents who have never been involved with a program before, this, they'd be able to start there, or for some that maybe have some skills, they would be able to take those and then pivot or advance within their current. And why the career path, and why this is super important is that we are very fortunate to have a really wide breadth and depth of large companies that are located here and small companies that are located here. And this would also not only help our residents be able to advance within their selected career path, but it also allows for our local employers to have talent that they could find here locally. So we did receive nine applications, as I mentioned. On this list, they are all alphabetical, so that was kind of the reason behind this. And while the variety, the vast majority of everything we're gonna be talking about tonight is all in the tech field, the NOFA was written broadly enough to include the trades. We just didn't have a trade-specific application that was, came into us. And the reasons for the applications that did not meet the minimum qualifications were either a late submittal of the application or the ability to produce two-year financials. And the proposals really range. They are everything from, you can kinda go at your own pace to be able to attain a certificate, or for ones that are doing a very more in-depth case management. And again, as mentioned earlier, we're really looking for these to impact our residents in a variety of ways, either them who, some who have no experience in tech, or those who do have some experience within tech. And so I'm, from this point forward, I'm gonna discuss the six proposals that we are looking to fund in some way, shape, or form. And I'm gonna present the summary information on each proposal and go through all of them. And my idea is that I would go through all of them. We'd get to the end, and that would allow for Council to ask any questions, as well as there is a representative for each of these proposals, either in-house this evening or on Zoom, and they would also have a chance to answer questions or provide an additional commentary. So jumping on in, the first this evening is Coursera. This is a program that was funded, or that, excuse me, was founded in 2012 by two Stanford professors who had a vision of democratizing access to...
Pam Parkin.
Excuse me?
I think she was talking to her kids.
Oh. Excuse me. The, the idea behind this one is there are over 5,000 courses that are provided on this platform, and they're, the organization that provides and develops those courses. So for example, if UC Davis provided a course that the applicant that actually completed that coursework, we would then receive their certificate from UC Davis. So it's actually linked back into there. And they would be looking to connect our residents with local employers for job placement. They came up with three different levels that we could potentially use for funding. That's why the 1,000 to 3,000 residence is listed on there. So we could do like 1,000 licenses, 2,000, or 3,000. The recommendation this evening is for the 1,000 license to get started. We do recognize that there's probably already 3,000 Rancho Cordova residents who do utilize this platform, but we wanted to be able to broaden that reach and see if there's anyone else who doesn't know about this that's out there. The piece that's kind of key in terms of the outcome for this particular organization is in addition to helping this, residents find jobs, they also refer to it as having a reported career benefit. And what a career benefit means is the folks that were able to complete the program, receive a certificate, and that allowed them to move forward in their desired career path. DP Global Solutions is a newer organization that was formed in Rancho Cordova, and we are viewing this particular program as a pilot study. And we're working, so the number of residents on there is probably gonna shift quite, quite a bit. This program focuses on having residents obtain a Web, Amazon Web Services Computing Certificate, AWS. And then they would also be looking to help secure all the residents in internship and job placement upon receiving the AWS certification.
Good question with the previous one and this one. Is, is the funding with respect to the number, like it was 1,000 to 3,000 residents? And like this one is 25 to 30, so 40K gets us 25 to 30 residents?
No, so this one, the original proposal had 25 to 30, but because we're looking at this one as more of a pilot program due to the organization being a newer organization, that number will be decreasing quite a bit.
Oh, so the num, okay.
Yes, so that one will be quite modified.
And same thing previous with the other one?
So...
Coursera.
So Coursera, we are looking to secure 1,000 licenses for that $3,000, $325,000. And if we went for 3,000 licenses, that would be $925,000.
Right, okay, got it.
Thank you, and I'll clarify some of that funding on the next slides as well. Thank you. Uh, Folsom and Cordova Community Partnership, this has been an operation in Rancho Cordova for about 10 years now. They do receive funding from us through a few different initiatives and in our Community Development Block Grant, as well as a Measure H Grant doing particular different work. For this particular one, they're looking at a flight of services. This is gonna be a lot more intensive wraparound services for our residents in terms of job placement. We are looking at 170 residents, and this one, the reason we put specifically that the conversation is ongoing in terms of funding recommendation is we also wanted to have a further conversation with them regarding how they could partner in helping us get residents into all the other programs as well, because a lot of these training opportunities have not been previously available. We wanna make sure that we have ability to do so. And again, they look at their outcome as not only are residents hired, but they continue to receive support services.
So in this one, what is, what, what do they learn? Sorry, in this one, what is, what do they learn?
For this particular program, for Folsom Cordova Community Partnership? So they have four different programs that they're looking to offer under this. Their individual case management is where they work with each individual resident to develop an education plan. And then they figure out what that resident eventually wants to do. And then they would help either find them, A, a job in that career path, or B, figure out which services that they need to refer them to to be able to get the training that they're looking for. The Moms Back to Work Program is a new program for them, in which case they would be looking at mothers who have been either unemployed or displaced due to the pandemic and providing services that are geared towards them, including potentially training scholarships and/or on-the-job training support services. And then they also have training scholarships currently that are through a SETA approval list. And so one of the conversations we're having with them is being able to refer any of these clients out to other programs. So this is one to where someone can come in and say they want to go into the trades and then they would be able to receive wraparound services and case management to help them figure out that career path. Or they want to become a CNC machinist and they would help them through that. So this is a little bit more broad where there's not a specific certificate at the end, as the end goal.
So I'm thinking the funding recommendation is, is like ongoing. What does that mean?
So the conversations are ongoing in that the initial proposal that was submitted to the city included just doing the case management, the Moms Back to Work, the training scholarships, and all the job. What we're realizing is that a lot of the other programs that are going to be presented tonight are also looking for residents to be part of that. So because Folsom Cordova Community Partnership is located here and is looking to not only do a broader outreach into our residential community, but our business community, we'd like to talk with them more specifically about utilizing that network to help all the other programs find residents that could work in the various programs that are talked about this evening.
So you're going to come back at potentially the next meeting to give an update on this?
Correct.
For this particular one, okay.
General Assembly, this is a program that is an immersive 480 hours of instruction to obtain a software engineering certificate. There are 20 residents per cohort. And these ones, not only do they, they have to have at least a high school diploma or GED, but they also complete an assessment to measure passion, grit, persistence, and the ability to learn. This one also came in with a range of programs. So they looked to do three cohorts initially. And because we are, as a city, new to workforce development initiatives of this sort, we felt it was better to start with one cohort, see how it works for our residents. And then we would be able to come back to Council, have a conversation of what outcomes were received and where obviously funding will be directed to going forward. Their outcome is that 90% of the graduates would secure a job within six months. This one does involve a little assistance from us in terms of locating class space if they decide to go in-person versus remote. But they would also provide a stipend for, and some of the other programs do this as well, for living expenses. And they have a designated career coach for each student until job placement.
I have a question about the timing of this. So for cohorts that are doing programs and it's 480 hours of instruction, is that a 12-week course? Is that a six-month course? I'm just wondering from the standpoint, and I know we're going to talk about the American Rescue Plan funds next, but I'm assuming part of that might be here. From a timing perspective, getting all those funds into the community for things like this, one, how long is it going to take? When are you going to come back if it's successful to ask for more?
Excellent question. And yes, that is definitely one of the challenges with this is we are kind of flying as we go with this since this is all new programs that we're rolling out. I will, I believe General Assembly is on the call and they can speak to that conversation is what 400 hours, 80 hours actually looks like. Some of the other proposals do denote whether it's a 12-week or a six-month course. This one, they just specifically included the 480 hours. And yes, so once, once we receive some direction from Council this evening, we'll have a few next steps. But once any of these programs.
So I, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, and then once any of these programs go live, we are looking for everyone on this call and anyone in the community because we're going to start hitting every channel we can think about to get this information out. So our residents will have the ability to participate in any one of these programs.
Okay. And I'm fine with the applicant can explain that if they're on Zoom or in the room. I would just ask staff that as you're putting these together to help us understand what each of them are doing, especially if you're piloting and you're trying them out, like, is it going to take, like, I guess I would encourage you to look at things that are shorter term and then coming back to us to see what the success look like. Something, something that's like six months in this case, considering the timeframes of the economy, the timeframes of the funding and us having to get them out. If it takes a lot longer, that's probably not nearly as appealing as something that would be shorter and then, you know, lead to a job. Or, or a, you know, transition career.
And the, the one piece with that also realizes that a software engineering course is very intensive. So the graduates with that also have a particular career path they're going towards versus, and one of the next ones I'll be presenting, it's basics, it's Intro to Programming. And so that's a shorter window, but it's also a different skill set. So sometimes the cohort, the courses is very specific to how intense it is.
Fair enough. Thank you. Sorry, good question. So what, it's 20 residents per cohort and one cohort is 300K?
Yes.
So 20 residents is 300K?
Correct.
Okay, so that's 15K per person and we don't know how long that instruction cycle is.
I know.
I think the applicant can tell us.
Correct.
It still seems like, okay.
We want to hear from the applicant really quick? Do you want to wait till the end?
No, no, I'd be fine with finishing the staff report and then they're each going to have their time.
Okay.
So they should be keeping in mind what our questions are right now.
Yeah, and the applicant did raise her hand, so we'll make sure that she has opportunity to talk about that at the end. Thank you. So again, this actually probably goes back to the conversation we were just having. So Udacity is a program where it's a four-month program. It is offered upscaling into two programs. One, it is Intro to Programming, and the second is Business Analytics. There are no prerequisites in terms of previous skill work that's going to be involved in these programs. And 50 residents can be a part of this program to start with. The interesting piece of this is when they did include in their proposal is that there are 107 positions currently in Rancho Cordova that are hiring for business analytics skills and 115 positions that are seeking intro to programming skills as currently stated. So we know that at least there's some need here. Again, this is looking to fund $160,000. And their outcome is again, that 74% will report at a positive career outcome. Again, career outcome is an opportunity for a resident to advance within their career. Usually also has to do with obtaining a job with higher income than they are currently managing. They do also maintain relationships to outsourced participants who require additional services. So in some cases, if broadband is needed, childcare, et cetera, they do have the ability to do that. The final program we're going to be discussing tonight is Women in Data. This is a five-month program for data analytics with mentorship. And the idea is building their portfolio for job placement. They will receive a, the first portion of it is they have to receive a data analytics certificate. And then once they do that, they build that portfolio using a capstone project with a Rancho Cordova employer. These guys are looking at two cohorts of residents, of 10 residents for each cohort. And they're specifically targeting women who have children and previous work experience. And then ideally, their outcome is that residents will be placed in a full-time job making over $50,000 when they complete the program. And they will also provide six months of hiring support. And as well as they do have an individual on staff to work with Rancho Cordova businesses to find job opportunities. And kind of is the roll-up to this is that really what this program is intended to do is provide a myriad of programs that are out there to assist residents, either ones that are more case-intensive for the residents who are like, hey, I'm pretty new to this. I need, you know, some additional support versus the ones that are going to be, as I always say, doing it at home in their bunny slippers. And all the programs will be tracking and reporting on progress of the residents in the various programs to make sure that they're getting some benefits either from career growth or switching jobs and getting a career path. To kind of summarize, these are the programs we just ran through. And I didn't total up the recommended funding, but I will tell you that it, because we're still working with the Folsom Cordova Community Partnership on what that could look like. So while we initially had discussed before you, Council, is the funding to be between $500,000 to $1 million, we are looking at funding that would be over $1 million. We do believe in some other initiatives that came in lower budget that will be covered all within the Measure R Economic Development Bucket and look at resiliency and recovery for our residents. And so of how this next step would work is we are here receiving Council feedback and direction. We'll then take that to either draft some of the contracts and/or obtain additional information. And then we'll return to Council with either of those contracts for approval because all of them but one, our pilot program, are over the city manager's signing authority and/or return with additional information to be concluded. That covers everything I'm here to discuss. Again, we have all of the applicants either in the room or on Zoom. And they're happy to answer any questions, as am I.
All right, excellent. Stacy, do we have any public comment?
We have one public comment from Krista, who is in the room, and a second from Surrender. If Krista wants to come forward. Surrender can go first. You'll have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, honorable mayor and council and city community members. My name is Surrender Devarpalli and I'm CEO of DP Global Solutions, which is Rancho Cordova-based business. And also we have CMA certification, which entitles to bid for California state contracts. And especially coming to my experience, I have around 25 years' experience at multiple business domains and multiple levels of professional career. And during my employment, we trained and mentored a lot of resources which helped them to grow in their career and fulfill the organization's needs. DP Global Solutions is a young and ambitious organization. And actually, we generated half a million revenue within the first one year of inception. We deliver customized and interactive technical solutions for the client unique organizational requirements, which helps to align their strategic vision. DP Global Solutions recruits, develops, trains, deploy the next generation of engineers on the highly-demand technological areas such as application development, cybersecurity, cloud computing, data science, software quality assurances, and enables them to compete in the emerging market. We are grateful and thank you for the staff recommendation for the funding of our workforce recovery program as a pilot program. We are committed to execute this program to achieve the program's goal. As part of Workforce Recovery Program, DP Global Solutions will recruit potential resources in the city of Rancho Cordova with the help of grant funds and is willing to invest in this program some percentage of matching contribution to train community members in the AWS, Amazon Web Service Cloud Computing Practical Certification. We appreciate city leadership, vision, and commitment by identifying this important need for workforce recovery program, which is to increase the access to career pathways program and help Rancho Cordova residents with barriers to employment to enter into the skillful occupations. We are excited about opportunity to work with city and help individuals in Rancho Cordova to find.
Your time is up.
Sorry, I didn't notice it. And thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Krista. Following Krista, I received another speaker card from Anil.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and staff residents of Rancho Cordova. I just wanted to take a quick introduction and to let you know that I've recently joined the team as the Diversity and Inclusion Director for DP Global Solutions. I'm very excited and strongly believe in the success of this program. This program will not only help the community, it will provide qualified job candidates for employers. I'm passionate about providing opportunities and career advancements for underserved community members, empowering women and minorities, continuing community memberships, building relationships in a diverse workforce environment that can compete in the market. My role with DP Global Solutions will include program awareness, attending events, guiding the team in searching for program applicants, creating processes, visiting schools and businesses, and community outreach. I'm looking forward to being of service to you and connecting candidates to enhance opportunities in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is that it for?
Anil?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity. The city workforce development program is a very bold initiative and very ambitious. Whether we go for a Rancho Cordova Promise Program or this workforce development program, I really appreciate the city council vision because we dream big and we have a big ideas. That's why we take the bold initiative. This is kind of the vision that every city across America needs, looking for the future generation. I think last time I attended the council meeting on a different topic and the people were giving the examples of 70-year-old examples like a bowling alley and competing in the next 50-plus years. It's really discouraged to hear those kind of things. We have to see around the world how fast it is moving. And the programs like workforce development, promise programs, these are the things that will help this city to stand for next 50, 100 years. In last couple of years, we achieved so much and we cannot stop or slow down on our progress. And we definitely need to encourage the, this kind of workforce development, not only big corporations, but the small startup corporations like we just here DP Global Solution. I think this is really encouraging news for a lot of new startups that will help to come forward and not only doing the business towards the profits, but also with a sense of community serving the people. And we have developed this program great, but I think there is one aspect that I really want to city council and the mayor to consider. I brought up this issue a long time back about the mayor technology council. I think this is the time now we form that mayor technology council so that mayor technology council can be liaison between the community and the corporations who can help promote this program, not only for the education purpose, but creating the future employment. And I want to give a few more talking points. I know Surrender Devarpalli, DP Global Solution, from long time. I worked with him professionally as well as personally. And he's a very fine professional and he delivers what he committed. And it is really impressive to hear that within the first one year of inception, doing a half a million-dollar business, it's really encouraging. I think city staff support and the recommendation is really appreciable. And I think I'm looking forward to see the success with Surrender and his company. Thank you very much.
I am looking in Zoom and I do not see any additional public comment for this item.
Excellent, all right. So I'm going to go to my council. I'll do it last because I'm super.
Amanda's mic is in.
Amanda's mic is on.
Oh, excuse me, everyone. I just made the comment that I noticed that some of the applicants had their hands raised.
I don't see any raised at this time.
Okay, well, we're going to grab some of the applicants and have them answer our questions. Can you go back to the screen that shows the monies? Excellent, all right. So one of my council had a question. Siri, I'm going to have you go first because you you're in the technical field like me, and I'm sure you have some questions. Let's go ahead and let's-
Right, I'll start with DP Global Solutions. And this was my question earlier, too. So this one shows again 25 to 30 people for 40K. Are we getting 25 to 30 people with 40K?
No, we will not be getting 25 to 30 people with 40K. That was the initial discussion, and then we just recently talked with them about a lower amount, but we haven't determined what that is yet.
But yeah, because that's an update I would like to see, given the early on Coursera is thousand to 325. And so what are we getting? Because if you're getting like five people for 40K or the number makes a difference. I am absolutely for Amazon Web Services. That's what's the that's the new thing. Absolutely for it. And if we get the most number of people for that money, I'd just like to see how many people we get for 40K or if we need to up that amount to get a decent number of people. That's my question for DP. Obviously, need more information on the FCCP proposal. The General Assembly one for I'm looking at their proposal, and it's the tuition that they've asked is 10,500 for 20 students, that's 210K. And I don't know why we're showing 20 for 300K. What what kind of what are they proposing? What is what is the software language? What are the tools? Is this a one-time investment? Is it like, can we do it? Is more details are needed for 300K for 20 people? It definitely seems a lot of a lot of tuition, just if we're just doing Microsoft Excel versus you're doing Java, what what are the skills they're teaching? What is being taught? How many students? How long is the program? And are you going to applicant, are you going to show that you can ask 90% of the graduates get jobs because of your help and support for getting them in place? Or they just get placed because they are skilled and they're trained for that? So need more information on General Assembly. You know, city-
Siri, do you want to let them? Siri, 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 do you want to let them answer the question real quick since they we got them on the phone?
Fair enough. I was just going, yes.
Yeah, let's do them one at a time so they can have a chance to answer you. So we'll start with General Assembly. Can you raise your hand real quick so we can put you back up there?
Hi, yes, I was-
There you go. All right.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, great. My name is Ali Pizzano. I'm the Senior Director of USO Operations at General Assembly. Thank you so much for for having us and for considering our proposal. So I am just going to clarify a couple of the questions that I believe Siri had and then can also answer any outstanding ones as well. So General Assembly is a global education company specializing in 21st century skills. The specific course that we are proposing for the city of Rancho Cordova is our Software Engineering Immersive Course. It is a 12-week course, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So it is truly an immersive experience in which we are taking beginners who are new to the field of software engineering and getting them ready for junior-level engineering roles once they graduate. And so what that looks like is a full immersive software engineering curriculum. We teach the basics of front-end web development, including JavaScript. We teach Python and and backend languages as well. And interspersed with that is our outcomes or career coaching curriculum, which is designed to help prepare our students for the job search. So in terms of the the budget that we propose, so it's a discounted tuition from our off-the-shelf price of $15,000 per head. This also includes a living stipend for the students because we students cannot have a job while they're learning. It is such an immersive experience. We ask that they focus on on the skills that they're learning in the course. This also covers the cost of live instruction. So an instructor who's in the classroom with the students or pending COVID, live online. And it also covers the cost of a career coach who works one-on-one with our students to find them that job after graduation.
Is there a site in Rancho Cordova that you're proposing for a living stipend? Because these are residents of Rancho Cordova already living in Rancho Cordova?
Yes. So as part of the proposal, we would work with the city of Rancho Cordova to find a site if we do agree that in-person instruction is safe and we're ready to go pending COVID. And so all we need is a classroom. Or or we can also do live online instruction, which is what we're currently doing at all of our sites.
Okay, so there are more details on what the 10K gets you. So it's just at this time. So the the career coach is 10K, the instructor is 20K. We don't need the living stipend of 60,000 because it's 3,000 per student if that's the case. So we have to see what the 10.5 gets you. It's a 12-week immersive course is 10K.
Yes, that's what we're proposing in here, yes.
Siri, well, hang on though. So you just said we don't need the living stipends. She just pointed out that they wouldn't be able to work while taking the courses. So this is a living stipend while they're taking the course. And a lot of workforce development programs, especially more intensive ones that are that require a lot of hours of the student, come with these kinds of costs, whether these are funded by the federal government level, a lot of other places, they include stipends. And it drastically increases the cost. So but I would also say we don't want to nickel and dime here. The point is that these people are out, they should be, for the most part, either out of work or transitioning into a new career, and this is support for them while they're going through it. We even do this for for, you know, younger students, like high school students, get summer stipends while they're attending, you know, summer, you know, training programs. Because they can't work and they're getting school credit for this or whatever certificate, and there's funding that comes along with it. And that's that's a hallmark of, I would say, 75% of the workforce development programs that are funded by the federal fund.
If I may jump in, we found with other programs that we've done, working with various other local city governments, the stipend really does make make a big difference in the lives of the students and who we're able to reach and put through this training.
Okay. And I'll just also add that, speaking of other locations, they did offer this program very recently in the city of Sacramento in partnership with Greater Sacramento Economic Council.
I did see that. And in their tuition, they also included a laptop and other equipment. So I don't see that on included in the tuition, which is why I asked.
Is that is that including the tuition? Do they get a laptop?
Um, yes, I believe we did work that into the budget.
Okay. Siri, any other questions?
No.
Okay, excellent. All right, I'm going to move on to Mr. Terry.
Um, nothing specific. I just, and I I heard it from some of the presentations. Again, my my comments are more for staff as far as the recommendations and what we're moving forward on. But I get why the other weird thing is why isn't this slide totaled on the right? So what's our what's our total amount that you're asking for? Maybe I have that in some other slide somewhere. But what is the total asked right now?
So the reason this one was not totaled on the right is because we are working still with Folsom Cordova Community Partnership to determine what their request of funding would look like.
Or 170,000.
Looks like a million 70 right now.
Right now, it's a million 70, correct.
Okay, without them funding because you're still determining. Okay. Yeah, I mean, and this is, is this coming out of rescue funds or is this coming out of Measure R funds or?
The conversation is currently to come out of Measure R funds. We have not discussed it coming out of the American Rescue Act plan.
Okay. So then our timing's a lot different. So we could pilot these, see what's the most bang for our buck, and then double up on one or two of these six months from now. So I guess what I would what I would ask is when I would prioritize whatever is the shortest as far as the timeframe in getting proof of concept and seeing what's most effective. One of the things that I think has become really strange about this economic recovery is, and I know we were talking so much about workforce development six months ago, nine months ago, but now there's so many job openings that it's like, how do we also spend some of this money to just connect people to the right jobs? Or, you know, fund their daycare so that they can go and interview for jobs and just get a job? And so I like all of these proposals that are here, and I get workforce development always sounds really expensive, especially when you go, you know, it's this much, you know, 20, 20, you know, 300,000 for 20 people sounds like a very large number. But when you compare, you know, the full support that you're putting towards a student, right? And, you know, and they're not getting college scholarships and all of the other things that would come with, you know, said training at a university, and the university would take them 18 months to 36 months to get whatever certificate in the same way. They'd have to figure out how to work, pay their rent, feed themselves and their families the whole time. If you can do something like this and do it quickly and get them right into a good-paying job, you know, that's not cheap. It's never been cheap to do those kinds of programs. So I'm I'm fine with these proposals, yes, and figure out what Folsom Cordova's community partnerships proposal is going to look like. But I would want whichever ones, I mean, and if these have to come piecemeal, but if we're getting proof in 12 weeks, like edit the agenda, don't wait until the ones that are, you know, taking five months to get to come to fruition. Don't wait to come back to us and say, you know, here's here's additional funding. Wherever there's success, like, let's find out how we fund it. But I don't necessarily have a problem with any of these. I I question if you're going to find 1,000 users of a software for that, but maybe.
Yeah, I same point, Donald, I was looking at the same thing. Again, I'm going back to my point on Coursera versus DP. We instead of sticking to 40K and going backwards, why don't you pick 25 residents and see how much that's going to cost?
Yeah, but but, you know, I mean, we're putting here not to exceed. If they only find 200 people that want it, we're not going to spend 325,000. Like, it's not like that. To me, that's not like-
That's a number, okay, so that could change if they only find, like you said, 200 people, that'll that's going to go down drastically then.
Sure, yeah. Yeah. I mean, if they don't find 200 users, if they only find 200 users or something, we wouldn't fund 325,000. So, I mean-
325 is our cap, get it?
Yeah, it's a software contract.
Hey, DP.
It's costing 30.
One sec, Donald. Hey, guys, what do you, how many do you think you can do for 40,000? Rough numbers, we're going to hold you to this.
For what? Well, no, no, Garrett, no, we wouldn't. The point of this, we're not going to write in the check, as far as I understand, and again, this is a question for staff, not the not the company.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Well, hang on, hang on. We're writing the contract that's not to exceed. So it's 300, it's $3,250 if I'm counting those numbers right for 1,000 licenses. If we don't have 1,000 users, we're not paying that, right? Because if if that's the proposal, I'm against it. So somebody explain to me how you're going to structure a contract.
Sure, actually, I believe this is usually Coursera does two-year contracts, and so they agreed to do a one-year for this one. Is a representative from Coursera on the line?
Well, wait, no, no, I want to hear from staff. We're, are we buying all these licenses and we're going to go find the people to use it?
Because that's the plan, correct? We currently have 3,000 Rancho Cordova residents that use this platform.
So we would have to buy that and then give it to our residents to use it to to have them? Yeah.
Well, no, no, there are. So you're saying you're saying right now there are businesses, right, that not put this as far, that it's business licenses, there's 3,000 users already, and we're going to pay their licensing fee for a year?
No, so there is a thousand that or 3,000 that currently use this platform. We are looking to add an additional 1,000 to that.
And who's responsible for finding the 1,000 users?
So that ranges, both Coursera has an outreach program, and they have community partners that they're looking to utilize. They will be looking, that platform will be up on our website. We do host it there. So then the city will also be advertising for this program as well as all of the other programs. And we're looking for support from potentially Cordova Community Partnership and other community members to help not only get out about their programs, but all the programs on this list.
But if 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 all those people fail to perform, we're still on the hook for the contract for that for the amount on the on this slide?
So currently, yes. Like, we when we're working out the contracts, we still need to figure out, like, okay, if you don't do X, Y, and Z, then we won't fund you because this will be not just one lump sum. It all comes out based on their ability to do this. So in theory, so for example, we'll use DP Global Solutions. If they're not able to get the five or six individuals, they would not receive their entire 40,000. They would receive a portion of that phase through.
Right, so if you end up getting 500 users, then the Coursera contract would be hacked, right?
It should be, correct.
Okay, I'm okay with it. Okay.
So it looks like this program participants receive a laptop stipend to provide internet access, $400 per week for nine weeks, and a program completion incentive of 1,800.
I'm sorry, I don't know which program you're referring to.
Are you going to General Assembly? Did you flip back to General Assembly, Siri? Is that where you're at?
No, I think I'm in the Coursera one.
Is the rep for Coursera on the phone?
Yes.
Can you bring him up?
Yes.
Are they providing a lap? Sam, are you providing a laptop?
Just a moment.
Oh, I thought you-
Sam, are you there?
Hi, can everyone hear me? This is Sam Combs with Coursera.
Hey, Sam, how are you? So a couple of my councilors wanted to ask the question whether you provide a laptop with the Coursera courses.
No, I don't believe that was in our proposal. We our our platform is an online learning platform. It's delivered asynchronously, so individual learners can and individual community members can join the program at their own time. And so part of our partnership, it did not include a laptop. I'm not, that was not part of our initial proposal, so it may be from a different proposal from from this group.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I was looking at GSEC past performance in in the Coursera document that they did give.
Correct, that and I apologize. That was that is tied to an organization we're working alongside, so we'll be partnered alongside the Greater Sacramento Economic Council as part of this and in partnership with them. They were demonstrating their past performance with similar initiatives. In this initiative, what we'll be partnering with GSEC on is employer engagement, marketing, and this goes to kind of one of the key questions that was raised by the council earlier around how do we get members aware of this, community members aware of this program and into the program? We've we've used some marketing channels in the past in past partnerships around the country to to drive these types of engagements, but we'll also be leveraging the Greater Sacramento Academic Council to help promote engagement on this platform as well.
Okay, excellent. All right, thank you. I'm going to flip over to Linda. Linda, what do you think?
Linda, if you're talking, you're on mute.
I'm not talking yet.
Oh, there you are.
Okay, so obviously, this is not my area of expertise. So thinking about the broader questions here, obviously, we need to try to ensure that we are getting that we are reaching the maximum number of people- hopefully, for the most economical cost. And in that context, does anybody have any idea when the unemployment stimulus or, um, the unemployment checks are running out?
I don't have that information.
Donald made a comment about reaching people who are unemployed, but unfortunately, right now, both the federal government, or fortunately, but it's a yin and a yang thing, all right? Fortunately, the federal government and the state of California are paying people not to work because they don't have a job or they lost their job, but unfortunately, people, not everybody is feeling motivated. And so that's why every restaurant that you go into, and like the little sign on, on Sunrise that I drive by every day, asking for roofers, people are struggling to find employees even though there are jobs available.
Linda, it runs out in September.
Okay, and, and, okay, so they've really only got like two months left. So the question is, does, is there really a possibility that Coursera is going to be able to find a thousand people who want to go into some high-tech field or who actually have the, um, the ability to absorb the information that obviously Garrett and Siri work with every day? So-
You can do it.
We want these projects to be a success. We want to be able to retrain people. Number one, are the jobs out there? Because a lot of this, a lot of the, almost every one of these is trying to guarantee that X number of people will find a job or they'll find, or they'll be given some ability to, uh, learn additional skills that will help them advance in the job that they've already got. So those are just all questions. Amanda, are you recommending that, with the exception of the partnership, because we simply don't have a dollar figure for them yet, are you recommending that we fund all five and potentially six of these?
Yes, the current recommendation is to do so, and the reason being is that the programs offer different services and programs to each of the residents at different levels. So in some cases, it's an intro class. Coursera actually offers over five thousand courses, so it's a really broad range and depth. So this was really kind of, to hate to use the term, but more of a shotgun, like, let's hit a bunch of different options and see what resonates with our residential and our business community.
Okay, then this ought to be real simple. You, uh, write a contract that doesn't necessarily commit them to finding a thousand people to serve for three hundred and twenty-five thousand, but sets up metrics so that if they don't, so that they get, they get, the, the company gets paid based on either a per capita basis or a, um, or, or a little bit larger, um, measurement, so that at the end of the day, um, if they didn't perform, then you could either investigate why they didn't perform or what the weaknesses were in the program that would enable them to perform better in a different round. And you indicated originally that you anticipated that the funding would sort of, would kind of, uh, sit under about a million dollars. So we are well over that, almost by twice, especially considering that you don't have a number from the partnership yet. So, um, one suspects that our next discussion about the Recovery Act, American Rescue Recovery, um, could pick up some of the slack.
Yes, and Linda, just to clarify, on the slide we're looking at currently, the initial funding was the full amount, assuming all the cohorts and all possibilities. The recommend, the recommended funding is on the far right that wasn't total, and it's roughly, um, a little over a million dollars.
No, you're right. I'm sorry. Um, you're right. I noticed that your, um, your right-hand column did come in somewhere around a million.
When we calculated, I think it came to thousand seventy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
So that would be my suggestion, just, just accept them all. But, um, make sure that there are benchmarks, there are measurements, that the goals are clear and everybody understands it, and give them an opportunity to perform the way they think they can.
All right.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so for me, thank you, Linda. Overly excited with the, 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 I love the Rancho-born DP Global Solutions. Very excited about that. I know the guys are going to do great things. Being in the tech arena, that is a highly needed, um, expertise. And if we can get any of those people, they'll, all the jobs that people are taking, especially from DP Solutions, those jobs are at, you know, anywhere from low-end sixty-five thousand to high-end two hundred and thirty grand. Like, it's an amazing mountain. If we can get some of my citizens in there, I hope everyone's on TV watching, take these Coursera courses. The, the tech field is what's booming in Rancho Cordova right now and growing all over the place. Also, super excited to see Women in Data, the largest women nonprofit organization, to actually partner with the city to bring jobs in. Great job, guys bringing them into the city. Really excited about that. And I know the Folsom Cordova partnership will come alongside everybody and find ways to get lower socioeconomic groups involved in a greater mashin', so I'm excited about seeing those. Thank you for everyone stepping up and putting this together. This is a lot of work, and I know it's still something we're testing. And I know we're going to get good results, and whoever gets the best results gets to double down, so excitement. So hopefully, they'll focus a lot of energy towards it because I know how hard it is to find someone, just an average. So I run a tech company in the region. To find people to work right now takes anywhere from sixty-five to eighty-five interviews, and even then, more likely, you get sniped by either the state or the government to pop the jobs out. It's such a wide market, and it's so hard to find people. And the fact that our city is one of the few cities in the region that's looking at reinvesting in its citizens to educate them to get the jobs makes us more attractive to business owners. We had some of the major tech companies, even recycling companies that do this, were looking for partnerships. So as these people come out, they're looking to pick them up and have them start at their job. So there's a lot of businesses that are looking for employers. So great job getting this all together. I'm excited about seeing where this lands, and I think that's about it. Do you need any more guidance from us?
No, I appreciate everyone's time this evening, for all of our council members and our community at large for listening in. And please, anyone have any questions or comments?
Excellent, thank you. All right. Thank you, thank you. All right. So we're going to twelve point three, and how would you like us to do that?
Twelve point two.
Twelve point two? Oh, yeah, twelve point two. Okay, I'm going to wait for everyone to get all situated. All right, Stacy, can you go ahead and read the subject?
The subject is American Rescue Plan Act Discussion.
All right, Kim.
Thank you. Good evening. Kim Duran, Kara Giorgio, Administrative Services Director, and I'm here this evening to talk about the American Rescue Plan Act. Is this working? All right, so jumping in, the purpose of tonight's presentation is, like I said, to provide an overview of American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the city, timeline for the use of these funds, eligible uses, and reporting requirements. This presentation is intended to be informational only and serve as a kickoff for the process for determining the use of funds. And we do believe this is the first of what we anticipate will be several discussions on this topic. At the end of tonight's presentation, council will have an opportunity to provide input on priority areas for further evaluation and also provide some input on a process for determining the use of these funds. So to start off, the city of Rancho Cordova's total ARPA allocation is just under fifteen point six million, with the first allocation already received by the city of fifty percent of that amount. And then the second allocation of the remaining fifty percent is anticipated to be received in May of 2022. These funds can be used for any costs after beginning on or after March third, 2021, and plans must be finalized by the end of 2024 and all funds expended by the end of 2026. And I think the takeaway of this slide is that we do have time to work through this process. It does not need to be a rushed process, and we do have some, uh, time ahead of us to work through that. Moving in next to eligible use of funds, the Treasury, US Department of Treasury in mid-May did release guidance and details ways funds can be spent to respond to the pandemic, fill revenue shortfalls, and help communities and populations hardest hit by COVID-19. The six categories on this slide are eligible areas, as identified in that Treasury guidance, and I'm going to talk a bit more about these bullet points on the following slides. Just to quickly run through them, support public health response, replace public sector revenue loss, address the negative economic impacts caused by COVID, water and sewer infrastructure are eligible, as is broadband infrastructure, and finally, premium pay for essential workers. And I did realize belatedly that I failed to include a slide on that last bullet point of premium pay for essential workers, so I'm going to just spend a minute here on this slide to detail what that, elaborate a bit more about what that is. So that category does allow for premium pay for essential frontline workers that had to be physically present at their jobs during the pandemic ongoing. This includes folks like healthcare workers, frontline food workers, childcare, janitorial, and so on. So that is what is included in that last bullet point. So moving in to the next category, the use of this, the next use of funds detailed here is to support the COVID-19 response costs, support public health, and to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19. This objective can be met by funding a variety of public health response and mitigation efforts. And the bullet points listed here and also on all the subsequent slides are really meant to be just some examples of how funds can be used. They are not, by no means exhaustive lists. It's over a hundred pages of guidance, and so this is just a taste of what has been pulled out of that guidance so far. So some examples include vaccination efforts, testing and contract tracing, also behavioral healthcare services, and also payroll and benefits costs for public health and human services employees, as well as public safety. The next category that is eligible for these funds is revenue, public sector revenue loss. And so this revenue, revenue loss is calculated, there's a formula that was included in the guidance, and it's calculated on an entity-wide basis rather than on a source-by-source basis. And so what that means is that it's going to look holistically across all of the city's revenues and funds to determine if a loss was experienced. So in our case, we had, we did experience, the city did experience a significant decline in transient occupancy tax during the pandemic, almost seventy percent. However, those, those declines were offset by gains in other revenues, and so, uh, no revenue loss was experienced by the city based on the formula provided. So this, at, at this point in time, we do not believe this is an area that we could further pursue. The next category is addressing the negative economic impacts caused by COVID. This could be support for economic stabilization for households and businesses impacted by COVID-19. This is the category that allows financial assistance to be provided to workers, families, and businesses impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. So some examples you see here, small business support, and also assistance to workers and families, those that are unemployed, and so on. This next slide moves into a little bit of a different category, so equity-focused services. And this is a effort to focus the dollars on parts of each community that have been hardest hit by the pandemic. And so the Treasury guidance allows for a broader range of services, programs, and projects in an area that is designated a qualified census tract, which is an area designated as low income by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. So it allows for a broader range of services to be funded with the use of ARPA funds. And so just working through the bullets here on this list, again, these are an example of some options. We can fund community health workers, public health navigators. There's, funds are, could be used for housing and services for homeless individuals, including the development of affordable housing. They can be used for addressing educational disparities, after-school programs, youth programs, promoting health and childhood environments, including childcare, as well as projects that build stronger neighborhoods in communities, including outdoor recreation spaces and public spaces that promote healthier living environments. And again, just a few examples. And this next slide does provide a map of the qualified census tract area within the city of Rancho Cordova. So hopefully, everybody can see the streets on here, that boundary, that are on the outside boundary of that red shaded area. So all those examples that I just provided on the prior slide, those would be feasible in the red shaded area of the city. Moving on to water and sewer infrastructure, this is pretty straightforward as it sounds. However, the definition in the Treasury guidance of sewer infrastructure does include what we refer to as stormwater operations, and so improvements to the infrastructure for any of those. So in our case, because stormwater is the only area where the city is involved, that is an eligible use of funds. Next category is broadband infrastructure, and this is a focus on ensuring that all areas of communities have reliable, uh, internet service, minimum of a hundred megabytes per second download and upload speeds. Based on initial staff conversations with our provider Comcast, we do, they have told us that we do have capabilities throughout the city currently for a hundred megabyte per second download speeds everywhere. However, we don't necessarily have upload capabilities at that same level because it's not as commonly requested and needed. But overall, we do believe, based on the information we've been provided so far, that we already have in place that infrastructure. So wrapping up, those were the categories, kind of at a high level where funds can be used. Just to talk a bit about the reporting requirements, it is anticipated, it's been already set forth, that there will be some very stringent reporting requirements for the use of these funds. And we actually have an interim report, which I just received instructions on today that are due at the end of this month. And going forward, there will be quarterly reporting required, and then a single audit will be necessary for all expenditures of these funds. And so just for those of you who are not familiar with what a single audit is, it's the, it's a more rigorous onerous audit that applies to all federal funds. And so anybody who receives these funds will have to make sure that they can comply with those requirements and provide the documentation and backup necessary so that we can meet those requirements. and provide the documentation and backup necessary so that we can meet those requirements. So to wrap up my overview, the purpose of tonight's presentation was again to provide this information and jumpstart a conversation on this topic. And we would like to hear from the city council if there are some initial ideas that you would like for staff to further look into and investigate. Go back and take a look at the Treasury guidance and come back with some more information. And also hear council thoughts on a process to develop an expenditure plan for the use of these funds.
All right. Thank you. Is there any public comment?
There is a public comment in Zoom. FISA, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
Go ahead, FISA.
Hi, this is FISA in Lincoln Village. I'd like to ask that the city engage in public outreach and survey the Rancho Cordova community on how they'd like to prioritize these funds. I'm in favor of using this funding for equity-focused services as well as increasing broadband and high-speed access. The pandemic has shown us how important reliable internet is. And I have a feeling that in the future, with events like wildfires and the hazardous air days that follow, we may still be relying on distance learning to keep kids connected to school when it's not safe for them to be there in person. In regards to equity-focused services, there seems to be a backlog within the housing program, particularly during this pandemic, which is being compounded, at least locally, by rollbacks in staffing at places like self-help housing, who we contract with, understaffing of case managers at the major community campus, that's another example of that. There's a lack of safe and sanitary housing that's affordable to our very low and low-income renters. Did you know that in Lincoln Village and countryside in our planning area, along Ruchia Road and Horn Road, residents are paying over seventy percent of their income on rent? By state definition, my neighbors can't afford their housing. There's also a high need for emergency housing right now, something more secure and stable for families than motel vouchers would provide. I remind you that our housing element shows that there are four hundred and twenty-nine K through twelfth-grade students that meet the definition of being homeless in the Fulton Cordova Unified School District. My personal concerns and preferences aside, I think the city should survey the public for direction on how to prioritize this funding. Thank you.
Thank you, FISA. Anyone else?
There is no additional public comment in the room, and there is no other hands in Zoom raised.
Excellent. All right, council, let's start with Donald.
Um, well, so there's very few things on this list that I would be opposed to. I don't, I don't think at this point, premium pay for essential workers would be something I'd be interested in. I'm assuming those would be our workers, most of whom kept a job through all of this. So I don't think that that's a huge priority. I know there are a lot of government, you know, services that, you know, run hospitals and do other things, and I think that may be an appropriate thing. But I think in our case, that's not something that I would be very interested in.
Let's go back to, let's go back to the list.
Yeah, I have the list up on my computer. So.
Well, let's do.
Okay, well, I do, so I'll keep talking. So, um, I mean, if there was any need for funding around infrastructure for delivering vaccines, I think at this point, it's all there, testing facilities are still up and running and strong. So I, I don't know if I see a priority there. I wouldn't be opposed to anything, but I want to understand what the need is and how they're addressing it. Because like I said, you could go to Costco right now and get one for free and pick whatever you want. And I would venture to guess that every CVS and Rite Aid in town has them as well. Um, so I guess when I'm looking at this, I would, I would probably look at things that are addressing negative economic impacts. I mean, FISA brings up a good point about distance learning, although, and I actually just shot her an email. I was really surprised to learn that the legislature and the governor basically made it illegal to teach distance learning at all this school year. So unless there's change by the legislature in ed code, they can't even deliver, you know, education by Zoom anymore. But still, well, excuse me.
Donald, no, no, I was just going to put on, I know in the Bay Area, they are doing virtual learning as well, so.
They have virtual academies, but public schools cannot do distance learning. They have to teach in person if they want to get ADed this year.
Right.
So if a kid stays home sick, they're not going to do concurrent teaching or anything like that. There are distance learning academies in charter schools. But you have to go and attend that and just do distance learning, you can't be in person. But if you're in person, they can't teach online. But that being said, that does not mean that it's not important to have all of our students and all of our families to have access to high-speed broadband. So I would still be very supportive. I just wanted to put it out there that, that, that to get access to learning for our students that are attending in person, at this point, schools don't even have the option to do this distance learning. They'd have to change the legislation for the year. So I think that's, I think it's really important, especially for more economically challenged communities, to have access to high-speed broadband. The water and sewer stuff, I think that'd be interesting, especially if we could use that to unlock some economic development projects that might be, I know that sewer fees have always been a struggle. So I don't know if we can use that as credits towards some other projects. I know I heard stormwater is an option, but I don't know if that's something that we can use to incentivize with the sewer district, maybe I heard that wrong. And addressing negative economic impacts in general, yeah, I mean, for those businesses that are surviving that can show that they had a rack of debt and we can assist them, any kind of improvements that they want to do or tenant improvements that they want to do to existing businesses that made it through the pandemic. And then being selective, but finding maybe ways to seed up, you know, startups and other, you know, targeted projects that we would want to see coming. I think, I think that's great. But yeah, that's kind of my initial thought. I'd really like to see staff really dig into this more. I, I appreciate, and I appreciate, and I don't disagree with FISA about the idea of doing some sort of polling or some sort of community outreach. But I think a lot of these too, it's not just, and we even heard this, you know, with the community center conversation, that, you know, there are just those ideas that like people, they like the idea of it, right, a bowling alley or certain other things that just, if you look at the economy and you look at where things are going, that, you know, that, just because you individual want something, doesn't mean it's something that is feasible or likely or that we have the ability to deliver. So I think some of this too is making sure that staff really kick the tires on ideas and projects and putting things together and say, here are the things that we think we could possibly do. And then seeing, yeah, what does the public think about some of these? I see nothing wrong with that, but I think just kind of throwing it out there to say, you know, give us your wish lists, when they may or may not even fit into this, what I see is a pretty tight funding window of things to do. But yeah, I mean, watershed pilot projects, if there's some way to work with soilborne farms or, you know, even on the project that I think they're going to break ground on here pretty soon. You know, I think that would be fantastic. But, you know, I appreciate staff for presenting this the first time. To me, I think I need to digest it, and hopefully we have another bite at the apple a month or so from now. And hopefully, economic development in the chamber and some other folks can do a little bit more digging and come up with maybe a little bit more clarity on ideas that we might be able to go after, I think would be really helpful.
Excellent. Thank you, Donald. Siri, what do you think?
Thank you.
Um, actually, I was going to start off with the premium pay for essential workers. Was this for workers moving forward or for the essential workers that actually worked during two thousand and twenty?
So it would be for any workers on the front line post-March third, two thousand and twenty-one? Because that's the eligible date, that's the eligible date for funds to be used, the starting point.
So those are the folks that are actually prioritized because they went out literally facing the pandemic and helped us. So that would be one of my top priorities, paying the essential workers that went out there, not just because they wanted to, but also because they had to, and risking their lives that were for their jobs and for their families. So that would actually be on the top of my list. Everything else here, you know, like Donald said, you know, they're really good points in a lot of them. The public health response, vaccination definitely has a lot of effort put into it. But then there's the behavioral healthcare services, the mental health, and the substance misabuse treatment, which actually popped up during COVID, which would require more, more intervention at this point. So that's something that we should, that's a good point. Each of these points have some bullets that should be bought up into the limelight. And are you looking for us to prioritize like one, two, three, or what are the top priority? Because all of this, there's nothing that I would say is not, should not be on the list.
The intent of tonight's conversation was not to prioritize in a one, two, three order, but really just to hear from the council, just if there's any priority areas that we should look into and start to dig into the council guidance or the Treasury guidance further.
Yeah, so that was my feedback.
Can I weigh in on one other thing that I didn't say that I'm realizing isn't on this slide? That FISA brought up too, and I just kind of forgot to say it. But almost everything on that equity-focused service slide, on which would I believe be the next slide? No, it would be slide eight. I see nothing there that I would oppose. I think everything there should be looked into and explored to see if we can find opportunities to fund.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's not, for some reason, that's not on slide, what was it, four, which was what you just had up. So I would just say that also I would be in support of that.
Yeah, I think that's another one that they have, equity-focused services.
Excellent. All right, Linda, what do you think?
So I'd like to ask a really naive question. Obviously, download speed means the rate at which you receive something. But at what point does the upload speed come into play?
So let's say you're, you send an email. Upload would be like, let's say you typed your email. When it sends out, it's the speed at which you're able to send something out of your network. So let's say you want to download a picture, it comes down really fast. But let's say you want to write an email back. When you hit the send button, it then tends to exit and sends it out. Sometimes when you're watching videos, it pulls down and it needs some interaction. When you hit the button to play or send a command through a website, it's use upload. Anytime you need to send or talk or communicate out, that's when upload speed matters. Does that make sense?
Okay, so, so, so I get a couple of newsletters every morning. So if one of them says, play this video, whatever it is, and I hit the arrow to play, then the speed at which I get a response and the thing starts to play is the upload speed.
Correct. Now, the download of the item to your computer is not, yes, it is. If you hit the button that hits the word play, that communication is the, that's the upload. The download of the item and then the playing of it, once it's on your computer, is the download speed. So you're correct.
The upload speed is more that whoever's sending you the video, so that it doesn't take five hours for them to put it, to send it to you or to put it on YouTube, right? If they had a faster upload, they could do it in thirty minutes or in five minutes or in two minutes.
Well, they could. I'm not talking about them, I'm talking about me.
Yes.
Right. You're downloading as a user. If you wanted to put something on YouTube, that's your upload speed.
Right.
So if you want to send the video.
Good. Thank you. I understood Garrett's explanation.
Excellent.
Okay. Um, for, you know, obviously, for us in Rancho Cordova, economic impacts have been a significant concern. And at this point, to date, there have been a variety of different programs that have worked or tried to work to address negative economic impacts. So that would kind of be my second priority. But my first priority, and I appreciate the very specific information about download speeds as opposed to upload speeds. It would be, from my perspective, it would be an absolutely great thing if we could say that everybody all over this city, regardless of when their house was built or their street was built, had the same access to broadband as everybody else in town. We are blessed with a terrific fiber system for our, for our central business district, for our new, our new neighborhoods. But if we could say the same thing for everybody who lived in Rancho Cordova, we would accomplish something great. Access to the internet today, regardless of your age, regardless of your technical capabilities, is probably the most important thing we've got going. So that would be my number one priority.
Thank you, Linda. And, and for me, so first off, if we, communication to our constituents is always the most important. So if we could do something to get them involved with it, always glad. And also, if they would like to contact us or contact your council, we'd love to hear from you. Second thing, I think economic impact, negative economic impact is most critical because our business district is what keeps everyone employed in our city. And without them, people are without jobs and money. Of course, I would love to see broadband infrastructure into all my lower socioeconomic groups and even everybody else so that, because broadband and what we learned from the pandemic is that it's critical. And even though they did just say that no education can be given through Zoom and whatnot, who knows what the next round of virus coming out might actually do to us? And those are the critical pieces for me. I would like to say that if there is a essential worker that was, that did not get premium pay during the time when he was fighting, that is a critical piece. Because have, being one of the employers of a lot of those critical workers, it's, it's hard for them to go out knowing that they are risking their lives to be able to perform and keep people in everything that they need. So at that point, that's all my question. Do you have any other, do you need anything else from us, Kim?
I think that is sufficient for this time, and we will return at a future meeting to discuss this further once we have some additional information in some of those categories that were identified tonight.
Excellent. Focus with the chamber and them to get us a little more finite, some stuff to work on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Garrett, I have a question. Garrett, I have a question for Kim.
She already left, I'm sorry. She's gone. I don't, no, I'm sorry, I apologize. That was messed up. I apologize. Go ahead, Kim.
So, Kim, did I understand you correctly that a first report of some sort is due by the thirty-first of this month?
Yes, that's correct. We do have an interim report where we have to provide some information about what's, what we've discussed to date by the end of August.
Okay. It's pretty preliminary.
It is, and we're certainly not the only city that is just starting these conversations. I mean, we just got the guidance in mid-May, so it is very early. But I think they're just trying to put a process in place.
Okay.
Excellent.
They also adopted the federal legislation, and it, you know, and they put these timelines in without any idea of how long it was going to take to get us the money.
Got it.
But Mr. May, if I may add just one comment. Part of the federal guidelines also give us some time to come up with the planning and the expenditure of the funds. So I, my recommendation to the council is that we take the appropriate time to design this and to plan this so it creates the most impact to the community and we can get the best use out of those funds. So we will come back to the city council with some additional conversations and dialogue. And we want to take the, all the input into account and take some time to develop those recommendations.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Kim. All right, so the next one is going to continue. Do you want us to read it and then continue it, Adam? Do you want us to read it, and then continue it, Adam?
No, you don't, you, yes, actually, you should.
I'll read it.
Okay. Stacy, go ahead and read it.
Agenda item number 12.3 is the discussion and direction on commercial real estate signs.
Okay. And at this point, we're going to go ahead and continue this to?
We're moving it to?
August 24.
August 24.
All right, to a council work session. And, so moved, do I got a second?
A second.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
I'd just like to acknowledge that David Zander did not join the meeting tonight, so he's absent, and I'd also like to acknowledge that we have no public comment for this particular item. Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yes. All right. Does anyone have any future agenda items? Seeing none? Seeing none, let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Bye, guys.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.